Calling the October 12th Petaluma City Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Do we have any? Can I follow your agenda?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. Sorry. Let's see. Do we have any comments from the public on closed session items? Do we have to say anything aloud? Item two. Oh, the chat's open if our attendee wants to make a public comment about a closed session item. While we're waiting for comments, I'm going to read item number two, which is the acknowledgement of AB 361. Following all recommended state and county pandemic guidelines, this meeting will be conducted in person for Petaluma City Schools Board members and designated staff, and limited seating available for general public. Special recognitions, reports, presentations, and attendance for public participation will be conducted online. For so long as the public health recommendation remains in effect, the Petaluma City Schools Board will reconsider the circumstances of the pandemic conditions within 30 days and make appropriate findings to continue with virtual meetings as needed.
So really, really, it's a discussion item, so if there's a, we can, we can discuss. Are we all, we are all happy with moving, staying in the same format for the next, for the following board meeting, which will be within 30 days?
Yeah.
All right, I think we can close the chat and adjourn to closed session. We'll wait for Ellen to come back. We are reconvening the meeting. First up, we have public hearing, contract reopeners with Petaluma Federation of Teachers and Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School districts.
Madam President, do we want to move up the student presentations?
Ahead of the, ahead of the.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Yeah, exactly. So I propose that we move item 8.1 only up to the front. That's the student presentations from three schools, just to respect the time that they're committed to this.
Okay, so you want to move.
Item 8.1.
8.1 to after 6.1?
Yeah, do right before 6.1.
Oh, okay.
Right now.
All right.
Hi, second.
Yeah, it's further down. Okay, is your microphone on? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will go ahead with item 8.1 now, and that is site reports to the board from Valley Vista, Casa Grande, and Petaluma High School. Okay, whatever order you guys think is best, go ahead.
So am I going to start with Casa Grande right now?
If you're ready.
Okay, um, give me one sec. Oh, perfect. So hi, my name is Carissa Stout. I am one of the 2021 through 2022 school year co-ASB presidents from Casa Grande, and I'm going to be telling you about August through October in the big house. So we kicked off our school year, right, with, you know, the first day of fully in-person learning for all students. Students were welcomed back with a red carpet, some music, and some welcoming posters. And I'm a senior, and it was by far my favorite first day of school yet. And clubs, so we had a very successful club rush. This year, we have a record-breaking more than 30 clubs on campus, and as far as I know, all of them are active and doing very well. So as you all probably know, we've had a little bit of a sub shortage district-wide, but our amazing admin team has been stepping in and subbing for some certain classes, notably PE classes. So here we have pictured our amazing principal, Dr. O, subbing for some PE classes. Back-to-school night was a success. We had both bilingual students and ASB students on campus to lead parents around. And although there were fewer people on campus as opposed to, you know, more, it was very successful, and I heard a lot of reviews from parents and teachers alike. So color by class, the first whole school dance and rally since before COVID was a hit. We had our dance and rally out on the football field, and students had a lot of fun, and now we're looking forward to homecoming. So the SRJC Jump Start, the Santa Rosa Junior College hosted their annual Jump Start event to help seniors get ahead on their post-graduation, sorry, checklist and things like that, and they had a very good turnout, and ASB students helped kick everything off and advertise it. So our entrepreneurship class continued their tradition of carving signs to display at Toy Biville Downtown. I believe they are already displayed. I was down over there the other day. So here we have one of our entrepreneurship class students showing off the signs that they carved. Each one of those took, I can't remember the exact number, but quite a few hours. So we really admire the dedication that those students put into those. Custodian appreciation, so the other day was National Custodian Appreciation Day. So ASB took some time to appreciate our hard-working custodians through some local donations from Jamba Juice, Lava's Creamery, some homemade baked goods, and a decorated lounge for them. And then afterwards, we helped clean up after lunch, clean up the campus. Sites and sounds, so Sites and Sounds of Casa is a twice-yearly event that is a month-long, where every single week, we showcase the arts. So this past week, we showcased some amazing musical artists and visual artists. Pictured here is one of our amazing students performing a song. And we will have those every week of October. At our parent night, parents were able to snack on some delicious big house catering food. I know they made a focaccia bread, but I don't know what else. And yeah, we heard some great reviews from parents, and everything went well. So some football records and sports news. Our varsity quarterback, Jacob P., has been breaking records left and right, and he has been interviewed by multiple local newspapers and news resources, and he is handling the spotlight well. So weekly wellness, one of our counselors, Ms. Friedman, has working with staff and students alike on wellness, and not only just physical wellness, but also mental well-being. Pictured is when the counselors came into all the senior English classes to talk to us about post-graduation. They were helping everybody with breathing and centering themselves. So homecoming season is coming up, and we in ASB are making some changes to revolutionize homecoming royalty. So first of all, instead of being called homecoming king and queen, we are just calling homecoming royalty and allowing all genders to participate. In addition, instead of one winner of 30, we are having four winners, one to represent each of our graduate profile values of broadly literate, civically engaged, highly employable, and personal vision. So each representative is choosing one of those four values and is running based off of that, and then there will be one elected from each value. Speaking of our graduate profile values, October is broadly literacy, broad literacy month. So at Casa Grande, like I mentioned, one of our graduate profile values is broadly literate. So our goal is that upon graduation, all gauchoes will be broadly literate. And this has a broad meeting, being a critical thinker, problem solver, effective communicator, writing, speaking, reading, asking informed questions, evaluating the credibility of a claim, emphasizing with and appreciating multiple points of view. So this month, our school has been focusing a lot on being broadly literate. And looking forward, so on October 13th tomorrow, we are going to be continuing our staff buddies. So in ASB, we are, each ASB student is partnered up with four to five, I believe, staff members that once a month, we write little notes and give little gifts. And all the staff have been appreciating this greatly, and it's a great way to improve the relationship between the student body and the staff. On October 22nd, we have our homecoming game, rally and parade, all on campus. October 23rd, we have our homecoming dance. The theme is red carpet and movies. October 30th, we have the infamous Egg Bowl football game, and November will be civic engagement month. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. You should hear me. All right. Next up, what do we have?
Hello, everyone. I am Nicoletta Johnson, and I am this year's Petaluma High School ASB Vice President, and I'm going to be presenting a little bit about what Petaluma High School has been up to since the beginning of the school year. So our first week of school, we called what was Week of Welcome, and during this week of welcome in classes, teachers really, we had practiced, we had practicing mindfulness, and this is when we took a couple minutes just to ground ourselves and be present in the class. And also during this week, we took time to do little activities to not only get to know our teachers more, but also our fellow classmates. And this again was just to kind of get students re-acclimated to a classroom environment, because a lot of students haven't been in a classroom in over a year and a half. So we thought this would be a good way to kind of get people excited to come back to school. And then also, on the first week of school, on the Friday, we had our back-to-school rally, and this rally was split up into two, and it was outside in our bleachers. Our first rally consisted of freshmen and sophomores, and in this rally, we focused on more welcoming students back to, like welcoming students to Petaluma High School. And then our second rally was split up in sophomore, and juniors and seniors. And at this rally, we focused on like welcoming back students and just kind of getting them excited for the school year and telling them about all the exciting things that they've once experienced that they can experience again in the beginning of the school year. Also, the week before school started, we had Link Crew hold their freshman orientation. And what Link Crew is, it's every freshman is put in to a group that's called their Link Crew Group, and it consists of about eight to 11 other freshmen, and then two to three link leaders, which are juniors and seniors. And what it is, it's basically so that freshmen are in a group with other freshmen, and then also upperclassmen, so that they can reach out to this group, so that they have upperclassmen to reach out to if they ever need advice or anything throughout the year. And again, we, Lynn Link Crew, I'm in Link Crew, so we reach out to our freshmen every month and just check in on them, and also send out little reminders about events that we have coming up at school. And Mr. Dosry, who our advisor, is doing a great job of being the advisor of Link Crew this year. Also, on the first week of school, we had senior sunrise. And as a senior, I thought it was a lot of fun, and our ASB teachers told us that this was the best turnout that we've had in a senior sunrise, which was great, because it was nice just to be with the senior class again, just as a whole, because we haven't been able to do that in a while. And we had some students playing spike ball. We also got donuts donated to us, and it was just a really good time to be with the senior class again. Also, we had Club Rush in September, and it was a great turnout. We had multiple clubs out, like Drumline, Circle of Friends, Trojan True, JSA, and there was a lot of signups. I'm one of the co-presidents of Circle of Friends, and we had like over 50 signups, which is the most we've ever had as a club, and so that was really great. Also, in our fall sports news, our fall sports season is coming to an end. The girls' golf team, they actually have their senior day today, so we're rooting for our seniors there. And then our volleyball team has their Dig Pink game tonight, which is why I'm wearing pink, because after, I'm going to support the volleyball team. And then also, our football homecoming game is this Friday, followed by next week is Senior Night, then we have Egg Bowl. And our cross-country and girls' tennis teams have also been doing very well. Also, at Petaluma High School, last year, we started the Student Advisory Council, which is just a board of students, and they work together to talk about kind of like almost issues we see on campus and kind of how ways we think we can improve it. And here, we started it at the beginning of this year, and our first topic that we had was about dress code, because it's been a hot topic at Petaluma High School, and just kind of ways that we think we can address it with staff and trying to get staff and students both involved in the conversation about the potential of dress code. And then finally, this week is our homecoming week, and it has been pretty stressful, but I'm super excited that we're able to actually have homecoming again. This, on Friday, we just had our homecoming rally, and like the first rally we had, it was split into sophomores and freshmen at the first rally, and juniors and seniors at the second rally. And at this rally, we had a family feud game between homecoming court nominees and staff, and the students really loved that, and it was just really fun to watch. Also, this week is our spirit week. This week, our homecoming theme is seasons, so each grade has a different season. The freshmen have spring, the sophomores have fall, the juniors have summer, and the seniors have winter. Our homecoming week is where each day represents one of the seasons. So today, we had beach day for summer, and on Monday, we had floral and pastels for spring. We also have our homecoming court, and like Casa, instead of having king or queen, we just have homecoming royalty. And something interesting we did with our homecoming court nominations is we had each club nominate someone for homecoming court, so that it's more diversified of our entire campus, as well as we did have a Google form where people could send their nominations. Also, on this Friday, we have our homecoming parade, and our four classes have been working super hard on their floats, and I'm super excited to see how it turns out. Also, we have our football game, as I mentioned earlier, this Friday, and we are having our alumni come to the game so we can recognize them. And then we also have our dance coming up this Saturday, and it's going to be on our football field, similar to how our prom was last year for the seniors. And I'm just super excited to be able to have homecoming and just to be with everyone at our first dance back. But yeah, that's just a little bit about what Petaluma High School has been up to this, so far, this school year.
Thank you. We do have a question for you. Is the parade going to go through town or just around campus?
Yes, it goes, it's kind of mainly around campus, but I know it's going to go down like Uppam and Western, and it kind of like loops around the high school, if that makes sense.
Um, what time?
3:30. Well, really.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Clear us to go, but around 3:30.
On Friday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll have fun at the volleyball game. Okay, looks like we have Valley Vista up next.
While Ashley's queuing up my students, I just want you to know, as those two presentations were happening, text messages and emails, behind the scenes, getting my kids effectively on Zoom, I'm super proud of their resilience and try, try again, and Dave Fisher and Ashley's help, so I think they're here. Perfect timing, our two presentations before took up just the time we needed. Oh, good, there's one.
Hi, my name is.
Oh, hold on one second, Marcel. Good job, though, I'm glad you're ready. Do we have his camera on? Can't see everybody very well. Marcel, can you turn your camera on? Perfect, then get yourself situated a little bit so they can, they can see your amazing Viking face, lovely. All right, when you guys are ready. I think, I think Sophia starts. Sophia, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Hi, my name is Sophia, and I've been at Valley Vista for six years. In my free time, I like to listen to music and draw.
Hi, my name is Marcel, and I've been at Valley Vista for one year. In my free time, I like to practice my keyboard. We have a few new routines for the school year that brings us together as a school community. Mondays are assembly days. We gather on the blacktop to celebrate birthdays, celebrate students receiving red ribbons, and hear important announcements for the week.
Wednesday is whole school recess. Traditionally, our first, second, and third graders have recess on one yard, and I have fourth, fifth, and sixth graders on another. Wednesdays now bring us all together. It's really fun. We see buddies and siblings play different games together, games together.
Friday is our day to accumulate laps towards ideal 26.2. Lots of classes gather on the big blacktop to run and walk laps together. We're all going to get to a marathon for sure.
Last week, our library coordinator, Ms. Shea, hosted our book fair. It was the first time Ms. Shea had done this since she started at Valley Vista during last school year, and there wasn't a book fair. It was great. Lots of kids bought fun books, posters, pencils, eraser, and other fun things.
Ms. Shea was open for truck up Losa as well. Saturday, our PTA hosted a fun event on campus with trucks and machines of all sizes. It was a free event with the suggested donation of $10 per family. Oski's ice cream truck was there as well as Streetlight Hot Dogs. We also sold snow cones and cotton candy to guests. Our PTA is amazing.
Buddies are a big deal at Valley Vista. Here, you see third and TK buddies playing a variety of games together. Some buddies read together, learn games, and even do science.
This is a picture of Eli and Jennifer Cooper. Ms. Bealb invited them as guest speakers to room 12. Eli has Down Syndrome, and we have a student in fifth grade with Down Syndrome. Eli was able to talk about his experience. His strength and area of need and helped fifth grade understand the classmates better. It was a wonderful experience.
This is Krista Moore, major with the Nevada Chess Club. Mrs. Halkin met Mr. Major over the summer, and they discussed bringing chess to Valley Vista. And here he is. He'll teach you sixth grade for six weeks, for six weeks, and then move on to fifth and fourth grade. And even better, Mr. Major partnered with Galati Construction to scholarship this program at our school. Awesome as that. Thank you, Galati Construction.
We have quite a few student teachers on campus today. It's fun to have extra adults on campus and help them learn about school and teaching elementary-aged kids. We have two full-times and four part-time student teachers through Sonoma State.
We'll be celebrating the Everos Mortos on Monday, November 1st. It's always fun to have board members and PCS cabinet members to visit our display in front of the school. You're welcome to make your own altar as well. We honor past loved ones, grandparents, aunts, friends, and even pets. You're welcome to participate and visit on November 1st.
Most classes have started their first IB unit of the school year. TK and kindergarten are digging into who we are. TK's key concept is individual have similarities and differences which give them unique identities. Kindergarten is focused on friendship and that they form in different processes for different purposes. And sixth grade is exploring where we are in place and time. The key concept is interpreting artifacts contributes to our understanding of people's histories. Our entire school continues to work towards full authorization.
Bike rodeo is Friday for our fourth and fifth grade students. St. Francis School hosts a fun day of bike safety, all school courses, learn to ride on the road, and more. We even had a bike mechanic, we even had bike mechanics on campus to fix up students' bikes that needed it. It's one of Mrs. Halkin's favorite day of the school year. Thank you for listening to our update.
Thank you very much. Is there a certain time that we should come by to see the display on November 1st?
No, things will be out for the whole morning on November 1st, so come on by. If it looks crowded, wait your turn. We'll be, we'll be out there all day. We'll clean up probably around 2 o'clock.
All right. Thank you. Great job, guys. Thank you. All right. So now, we will do the public hearing for contract reopeners with PFT and Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School districts. If anyone has a comment, either in person or online, we can open up the chat. Go ahead and put your first and last name in the chat, and if you would like to make a comment about this. All right, we'll close the chat and close the public hearing. Anyone have anything to add? No?
That's it, yeah, we can close the public hearing.
All right. Okay, so item 6.2, Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. Matthew, go ahead.
So just want to frame this conversation. So typically, we would do a public presentation. We're going to incorporate that into the public hearing. So Gianna Biagi and her team are going to come on and do a 10-minute presentation. Board members have questions to ask, you can feel free to ask questions, and then we'll open up for the 20 minutes of public comment. The panelists, yep.
Can you add the rest of our team? Is that okay? Okay, who else?
Absolutely. Do you want to, do you know who that is, Ashley? So could you give us?
Thank you.
And while, while they're being promoted, I just wanted to add that we will have public comment on this item at the end of the presentation.
Okay, Gia, will you let me know when you want me to share?
Yeah, um, Ashley or whoever's running the camera or the Zoom, could you please give Lisa Gottfried sharing capabilities? Thank you.
She, she's got, everyone is a panelist has that, has.
Oh, awesome.
So do you want me to just go right to it?
I think we should, yeah.
Okay. Share sounds.
Good evening, Petaluma City School Board of Education, Petaluma and Sonoma County Community. My name is Gianna Biagi. I'm a Sonoma County native. I grew up in both Petaluma and Sonoma. I'm a graduate of Sonoma Valley High. I'm a graduate of Sonoma Valley High School and I'm a High Tech High Graduate School of Education New School Creation Fellow, a prestigious fellowship for young innovators in education, leading community change. I'm here tonight with the Magnolia Global Academy team to tell you about our proposed dependent charter school in the Petaluma City School District. We are a group of thirty-plus Petaluma and Sonoma County locals dedicated to building a dependent charter school here in Petaluma and Sonoma County. We are not affiliated with Magnolia Public Schools Network or any charter management organizations. We know that enrollment is declining for ninth grade students in the Petaluma City Schools District. You can see here that enrollment of ninth graders at Petaluma High has been stagnant since around two thousand ten. Enrollment of ninth graders at Casa Grande High School has been declining slowly since two thousand ten. We also know that other new schools in the Cotadia and Santa Rosa School Districts, both private charter and magnet schools, have cropped up and have given Petaluma families another option. Of all of these schools below, Sonoma Academy, Credo, Tech, and Quest Forward have populations of students from Petaluma, ranging from about ten percent of their student body to fifteen percent of their student body. The Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders team believes that we can bring students that have left the Petaluma City Schools District to attend one of these schools back into the PCS district with our dependent charter school and our variety of programmatic offerings. We believe that we can help the school district retain and even gain students from outside of the Petaluma City School District with our robust charter program. We are excited to work with the experts at the Petaluma City School District, including Superintendent Harris, Chris Thomas from the Central Business Office, as well as the other district admin staff, the Board of Education, and other community leaders, teachers, and education advocates to make MGAL a reality. We want to align our governance, budget, facilities, and teacher programming to ensure that everything we are doing is the same as what PCS is already doing. Our advisory body is based on the Advisory Council model at Cherry Valley Schools, and we are excited to be a dependent charter school that is under the Petaluma City Schools District Board of Education. For our facility, we would like to work with the district to find an appropriate facility that is part of the PCS family, and we would be happy to co-locate on another campus. Our budget was developed by Latasha Thomas, a CPA at Dilwood, Berkel, and Miller. We use the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty PCS ADA projections, and we are assuming that our students will cost the same, have the same ADA as students at every other PCS school. In addition to our budget, we also have a five oh one C three foundation that we have set up in order to fundraise for the startup costs and any additional costs to MGAL that will happen in the foreseeable future. Our goal is not to dilute the PCS budget and to ensure that every student in PCS is able to receive a quality education through bringing in additional money both to MGAL as well as the PCS School District. Finally, we are supportive of the teachers' union, we are members of the teachers' union, and we want union teachers at our school.
Hi, I'm Lisa Gottfried and I am in my ninth year of teaching at New Technology High School in Napa. We are the very first project-based learning school in the United States, and there are over two hundred schools that are modeled after our program. I'm also an assistant professor at Turo University's Graduate School of Education in the Innovative Learning Program. I'm a certified PBL teacher for New Tech Network, and I am in the teachers' union. MGAL's school mission is to educate leaders through experiential learning, a commitment to equity, community partnership, and global citizenship. When we talk about experiential learning, we're talking about learning by doing. And we use what's called the six A's for project-based learning, assessment, applied learning, active exploration, adult relationships, academic rigor, and authenticity. We are also expecting that each student at MGAL complete a four-week internship, which includes work experience within a business and a two-week externship, which includes job shadowing with professionals in the community. All of MGAL's courses and projects are designed specifically to meet Common Core state standards, next-generation science standards, English language development standards, history and social science standards, and any other applicable California content standards. Our graduation requirements align with the goal of having a hundred percent of our student population graduate being college and career-ready. That means that every student will be A through G eligible, which means that they'll be able to apply to a CSU or a UC school or a four-year university right out of high school. We also plan to offer career tech ed capstone pathways for trade schools and other post-secondary career choices.
My name is Adi Lacy, and I'm here today to talk about MGAL's commitment to equity. Students have a variety of needs when it comes to education. And by having an equitable approach to education with inclusive school policies, we have a chance to catapult our students into the future. And this all starts by making sure people are consistent in maintaining a culture of equity. And in order to do that, having a diverse and capable team is essential because this allows us to hear each piece of our collective student voice. By bringing together a myriad of perspectives, we can help illustrate potential solutions to complex problems and facilitate new educational options for our students. At our core, we want to provide diverse educational opportunities to add a dimension to our curriculum that helps fortify this vision. Meeting the need and meeting people at their level is critical in education. And a culture of equity can encourage a culture of authenticity as well. Having consistency of equity can provide a sanctuary of opportunity for our students to grow in, and our inclusive school policies can help us protect that.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Rod Harris and I work with the International Education Organization, SI programs located in Sebastopol for the last twenty-six years. Myself, I've been with the company for twenty-two years and currently serve as the Director of Strategic Initiatives. Education infused with an international experience has become commonplace in today's world. While the opportunity to study abroad has increased significantly, it remains elusive for the majority of young people. SI programs and myself are proud to collaborate with Magnolia in the effort to bring this important educational experience to each of its students. Each and every one of our students will experience firsthand a blended educational and cultural environment that stresses integrity, high-impact learning, leadership development, and global awareness. Young lives will forever be changed and better prepared for the future as a result of our guiding principles. These principles include personal attention, community emphasis, an immersive experience, and of course, safety and support.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yancy Hakobal. I currently work for Petaluma People's Services Center, serve on the General Plan Advisory Committee for the city of Petaluma, and participate in Daily Axe Leadership Institute for Just and Resilient Communities. As someone who supported the positive development of young people all over the world, I recognize the importance of ensuring we're all working together and as a community. MGAL is committed to including and uplifting the voices of all stakeholders. We received over a hundred and seventy signatures from parents in Petaluma and surrounding cities interested in enrolling students in MGAL. Along with students, families, and community members, we're thrilled to have support from our local businesses, nonprofits, community-based organizations, educators, and community leaders. In addition to support from CTE, PPSC, Verity, First Five, and others, we also have many businesses and organizations who are excited to host students through our externship and internship opportunities, including SIA Programs, Sonoma Valley Mentoring Alliance, Sonoma County Farm Bureau, and Sonoma Creamery. We're excited to be part of a meaningful collaboration within our community to ensure young people have the resources, support systems, and spaces they need in order to succeed and feel seen.
My name is Kenyatta Reynolds. I'm an educator, parent, and lifelong resident of Petaluma. My three children have attended four Petaluma City Schools and two Old Adobe Union Schools. As my children approach middle school and high school, I'm finding myself struggling with the decision of where they will continue their education. The possibility of a school that'd be dedicated to equity, inclusivity, and international education sounds amazing. I immediately had to get more information and get involved. I now find myself on the advisory board and design team. Speaking with community members, I have learned this school is more than just a big brain idea, but a need and wanted in this community. Many families have started to look at educational options outside of Petaluma City School. If MGAL was here, we would be more likely to stay. MGAL is designed to create a space for youth to be fully prepared for learning through all school breakfast, morning movement, connection across grade levels, and leadership opportunities. The opportunity to study abroad is not one that is common among high school students. As someone who has afforded this opportunity, I am thrilled at the possibility my children might be able to spend time in a different part of the country or even the world. The perspectives, the experience, and the skills gained from spending time in a different part of the country or world cannot be understated. Myself and so many other families here in Petaluma and Sonoma County want this option. Thanks so much.
Hello, my name is Jacob. I go to Mary Collins School, Cherry Valley. I'm in seventh grade. The high schools I'm interested in are Sonoma Academy and Credo. However, if MGAL opened up, I would be interested in it because it's not only in Petaluma, which is closer for me. Also, it has job shadowing and all the other things that the other school offer for me.
Yes, thank you so much for taking the time to watch our video presentation. We would be happy to answer any questions that you have this time.
So, anyone have any questions? Did you want to read the, um, the public? Oh, okay. So since we're gonna do, um, public comment, I'll go ahead and read our public comment policy now.
So do, so do board members, more board members have any, any questions for the panel right now? And, and just to ma- make sure that we're clear as well on next steps, the district staff is now taking a look at the, the charter petition. Our goal is to bring it back to the November ninth board meeting for, with, with a recommendation to the board, so the, and the, the board will then, um, take a vote. So this time, if board members have any questions for MGAL, um, charter petitioners, and then we can open it up for, for the twenty minutes of public comment.
Okay, so, um, we can take questions now and then we can do the public comment. So, okay. Anyone have any questions?
I was wondering, you, you talked about, uh, trips, international and otherwise. I was wondering, A, how you're gonna pay for that, and B, what about, from what I read, it's a requirement, what about students that are undocumented? Um, how will that work?
That's a really good question, and we've actually gotten that a lot and, um, had some really good feedback, both from parents and students around that question. So we have set up a private five oh one C three foundation, and we are actively fundraising to ensure that our travel program is sustainable for the near future and for the long horizon. So our goal is to be able to ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, can travel. And we know in Sonoma County, there are people that want to fund that and are willing to assist us in doing so. As for students that are undocumented and/or students that perhaps are not interested in traveling abroad, we will have a domestic travel option for students as well. There may be some students whose families would prefer them to stay in the US or to stay, you know, closer to California, and we would like to make sure we're providing that. Lisa or Yancy, do you guys have other thoughts?
There is plenty of opportunity to, uh, have hosts that are both domestic and abroad, so, um, to reach out to sister cities or, um, other cities that are nearby in California for those who need to stay local. It can still be a, um, novel experience and a cultural exchange, uh, no matter where a student travels.
Go ahead, Talvin.
Sure, um, I thank you for your presentation and for your petition. I'm still working through it. It's a long one, so I think you understand. As I'm reading it, uh, uh, the, the main question that comes to my head is why are you proposing a dependent charter? Because it reads like an independent charter.
That was my question also.
That's a really good question. Um, and so we've actually worked with our legal team at Young Mini and Core, which are the charter lawyers of California, to build out our petition in a way that is sustainable for the Petaluma City School District as a dependent charter. As we all know, there is no difference between independent and dependent charter in the Charter School Act. So we have worked with our attorney to ensure that we are able to build this charter as a dependent charter while, while maintaining a, an ability to ensure that we can assist PCS in doing everything that we want to do. Our goal is to really align everything that we do to what PCS is already doing. Like, I am really impressed by all of the work that you guys have done, and we want to make sure that we are in alignment. So we have written this petition to be in alignment with your work as well as are open to reworking areas where there may need to be conversations about specific things.
Let me ask a question in a different way then. What do you imagine your roles will be in an, in an approved MGAL, uh, school as proposed?
We would like to be able to work directly with the experts, so you all at PCS, the Board of Education, the CBO, the district staff and administration, and we would like to find a way to fit our work and our support of the district into the district's vision for MGAL. So we would like to come together and work in partnership and absolutely ye- like yield to what you guys need and want out of our school.
Okay, uh, I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm just, it's just not resonating with what I'm reading in the, in the, in the petition.
May- maybe I could speak to that, uh, because the school that I work at is, um, project-based learning wall-to-wall. It was an innovative, incredibly innovative, uh, program when it began twenty-five years ago in Napa. We are actually a public school. So, uh, there are ways that one can provide innovative programming and still be, uh, wholly a part of the district.
I'm not, I'm not questioning that it's a public school that you're proposing. I'm questioning whether the, the role of the district versus the role of that the petitioners are gonna have with this school. That's what I'm, that's what my question mark is about.
I can go ahead and answer this. So currently, we do have an advisory body. They will move and become the board of our five oh one C three foundation. So that way, when we are a dependent charter school in your district, we will be under the Board of Education, and the Board of Education will be able to assist us or pick the advisory body that we will have at our school, similar to the way Mary Collins at Cherry Valley has an advisory council. Additionally, we'd be happy to bring our legal counsel to any meeting with you all to explain their reasoning about the parts of the charter with regard to our governance.
Do you have a follow-up question?
No, not, no, not right now.
Okay.
Hey, I have a follow-up to that, just because I, I'm confused. Um, thank you for the presentation. So what do you see as the difference between a dependent charter and an independent charter? Why would there be two different entities? Why are you, uh, so insistent that you are a dependent charter when everything in your petition is independent of us as a district? So I just want to get your take on what do you see as the difference between a dependent and independent charter?
So we.
Not, not through the law, through what you think it is.
So, I mean, I can speak very, very confidently about the Charter School Act and the law. But I know that we, we as a team ha- want to work in partnership with a school district like Petaluma City Schools because of your long track record of innovation and because of your, your school board. And we want to be a dependent charter because of the things that you guys are already doing in this district that attracted us to you in the first place. You know, I know you don't want me to talk about the law, but, you know, an independent charter by law has their own board, um, and they do, you know, they, they do in some instances take money out of a district, and we really, as community members, as locals, you know, I grew up here, we are all local, we really want to make sure that we're keeping resources and funding in the district and actually bringing in more resources to the district.
So I guess I have to reframe it again. Um, when you say in partnership, your advisory board is in partnership with the Board of Education and our district, um, administration, what do you mean by in partnership? I, I'm very, I'm just, I'm trying to grasp what exactly you see your role in terms of working within our district administration.
So we have an advisory body right now that has been assisting us in setting up this process, in writing the charter, in creating community contacts. The next step is that our advisory body will become the director of an independent, not-for-profit, five oh one C three foundation that is connected to our school. They will have no affiliation with the way the programming is done, the curriculum, the school development. That will all fall under the Petaluma City School District. We would like to work with the Petaluma City School District to make this school a reality. Lisa and myself and Adi, Kenyatta, and Yancy, we all have experience in education. Many of us are local and grew up here and attended public schools, both in Petaluma City Schools and outside of Petaluma City Schools. Um, so we would like to work with you to make it a reality, but ultimately, we understand that if we were approved as a dependent charter school, you would all have the final say about what we are trying to do.
So along those li- So along those lines, I know I'm, I'm- Along those lines, what I'm confused about is that in your petition, you don't say that they become part of the foundation. In your petition, you say that the, that Magnolia shall be governed by the advisory body and that you will maintain oversight of the, of Magnolia, the academic performance in accord, in accordance with measurable student outcomes outlined in element two. It will maintain oversight over other elements of the charter school's educational program. Nowhere in here does it say that there's a sunset after a year. So I want to, this is why it's important to me, is to figure out how does this petition that you've submitted work with what you said?
Yes, thank you so much for asking that. I really appreciate all of these questions and helping us clarify our mission and vision. So as talking within, with talking to our legal counsel, they have advised us to move our advisory body to become the Board of Directors of our 501(c)(3) foundation. And I have already begun taking the appropriate steps to do so to ensure that if we are authorized on November 9th, PCS and the Board of Education will have full control over the school. I'd be happy to follow up with legal documents explaining this process as well. Our advisory body at this point has just been a group of very involved community members who have put like their blood, sweat and tears into making this school a reality. But we understand that as a dependent charter, we want to work with the Petaluma City School District, and we have modeled the advisory body off of the Advisory Council at Cherry Valley School after many conversations with parents in that school.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up about Maddie's?
Yeah, yeah, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So let me, I want to ask a similar question, but in the opposite way. Why not be proposed an independent charter? Because you're set up for it with the foundation, which our other public schools don't have, other than the PTA or, you know, they don't have an independent foundation. It seems like you've done the legwork for that.
As a local, as someone who's lived in Sonoma County my whole life, it would not feel right for me to take money out of the school district. Like, I benefited, Adi benefited, you know, Lisa, Kenyatta, we all benefited from these schools. These schools are important to us, and they're important to our community. And we want to bring resources and money to the district, not funnel it away. And so our goal is to really work with you guys, because we respect the work that you're doing, and to not do anything that would detract students from the district, but actually gain, retain and gain students in this district.
I have a question related to that, unless Sheldon, did you have a follow-up?
No.
Okay, so you did talk about, you know, the, all around the country, we're seeing stagnant or declining enrollment, as well as here in Petaluma. And then you're also saying at one point, you want to have 600 students, not just drawing from our schools, but from Roseland, Russian River and Boys Hot Springs as well. Why are you choosing to draw from these areas? How will you draw from these areas? And how do you see that affecting our current enrollments at our schools as well?
I can start to answer this, and then Lisa and Yancy, if you could jump in. So we have looked at the demographic data of Sonoma County and have pinpointed the Boys Hot Springs area, which is where I grew up for the majority of my childhood, Russian River and Roseland area as areas of really high need. We also know that in order to be truly an equity project, we need to provide transportation for families, especially families that have need. So our goal is with our 501(c)(3) foundation, is to provide transportation that's for students that may need it to come to the Petaluma City School District, you know, through a variety of different ways to attend Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. And while enrollment has been declining, you know, across California, like, we all know that California, our population is shrinking. We have, it's been really clear to us through our research that students have been choosing to attend other high schools outside of PCS, outside of, you know, it's not just PCS, outside of Sonoma Valley Unified, outside of Santa Rosa Unified. Students have been choosing to attend other high schools, and we really want to bring students back into the Petaluma City School District. We feel like we can do this through our program. I don't know, Yancy, if you have anything to add?
So you talked about Boys Hot Springs. What about the, I'm not familiar with the Russian River area and how far that is, as well as the Roseland.
So Roseland is part of Santa Rosa, and they have charter schools in Roseland that have really long wait lists. So similar to how Credo High School and Sonoma Academy, they oftentimes have a really long wait list. Roseland University Prep and Roseland Accelerated Charter, they often have wait lists that people will, you know, are really eager to get off of. There's a really interesting opportunity there to enroll more students off of those wait lists. The Russian River area near Forestville, Guernville, that's like the colloquial name for it, I guess, because I grew up here. That's kind of like what I call it. But we also know, having spoken to the supervisor there, that there's a real need that parents see in their community to have students in a school like MGAL. And so like Yancy said in our part, her part of the presentation, we received over 170 signatures from families who are interested in enrolling their students. And about once a week, I get an email from someone saying, can I sign your charter? And I'm like, well, it's too late for that. So we know that there's not only a need, but a want. People want this program, and they want it to happen in Sonoma County.
In your petition, you talked about your targets of 50% BIPOC, 50% economically disadvantaged. What if you don't meet those goals? I mean, I guess I'm confused about, are you gonna deny students if they don't? Because you can't in a dependent charter, can you? I didn't think so. You can't say, no, you can't come because, you know, we-
There are, yeah, there are certain enrollment processes that need to happen. They need to be approved by you and by the district. One of the ways that we can address that without changing the procedures that are, you know, legal procedures that need to happen for enrollment is just in how we recruit, where we recruit, who we go out, what communities we go out to, to speak to junior highs and middle schools to talk about our program is a big part of what we're hoping to address that particular need.
And also, I, I just wanted to point out, you keep bringing up Sonoma Academy. That is an extremely expensive, private school. So that's like comparing apples and oranges. I don't think you can use that as an example.
And I think-
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, and we should probably be comparing ourselves to Credo High School or Tech High, which are, you know, more similar to our type of programming. I completely agree with you, Ellen.
And I think what Ellen was speaking to demographically, like, when we look at the racial makeup of Petaluma or even Sonoma County, it's like 1% or 2% black. Our district is like 30%, right? Hispanic or Latino, however you classify that. So again, like with these goals of racial makeups, like, how do you guys envision that happening?
So I just want to clarify that Sonoma County Public Schools is about 48% students of color. So there is almost not, you know, obviously, nothing is, it's not perfect, but there is almost a 50-50 split across public schools in Sonoma County. Of course, the concentration of students of color and white students is different, right, across every district. In Petaluma, we know it's about 30%. In Sonoma Valley, we know it's about 45%. So our goal, like Lisa said, is really widespread recruitment and recruiting in different areas of not only Sonoma County, but Petaluma. We know that because of longstanding policies in the United States and in Sonoma County, there are some schools that are predominantly students of color, and there are some schools that are predominantly white students. Our goal is to really recruit at schools where there are students of color, where there are, you know, students who need and want us, as well as as schools where there are white students. Ideally, we just want to make sure that we are as accessible and that our enrollment is as accessible as possible. 50% is, you know, it's a goal, it's a target for us, and I think it's a really, a really easy way for us to try to live out our mission of providing an equitable education to all students.
And what about in terms of, like, the percentage of parents who sign the charter? Was it 50% BIPOC who intend on sending their kids, as well as teacher recruitment? Because when we looked at the numbers of our teachers, I think we're at, what, 1% black? Do you guys know off the top of your head that teachers of color about, like, similarly? So how do you plan on addressing both of those things? I guess I want to know, addressing the teacher population racial makeup, like recruiting in that way, and the percentage of families of color that have signed your charter petition?
So Gianna, can you, it's probably good here to speak to the consultant that we've been working with about how we're going to recruit teachers and some of the steps that we can take in working with Sonoma State in lowering obstacles for student teachers to work within the classroom. Can you tell me, who is the-
We work with Dr. Mariana Martinez, who is an education consultant and the director of the camp program at Mendocino College. She has been working with us since, I would say about maybe October, around, about a year from, about a year ago, she started working with us in building out strategies, both to have, you know, inclusive school policies and curriculum, as well as recruiting and retaining students and families that want to come to our school and that need us. And so she is in, working with us to develop a recruitment strategy, especially for students of color. You know, we have a recruitment strategy for LGBTQIA students. We have a recruitment strategy for all special populations that we want to be able to have access to our program. In terms of teacher recruitment, we are also working with Dr. Kelly Estrada, who's the, the director of, she's the chair of the Education Department at Sonoma State University, and she runs the Puerta Project. And so she has been working with us to develop a system where we can have SSU teachers at our school. She, through the Puerta Project, works primarily with teachers of color. We all know, you know, sitting in this Zoom room, sitting at the board meeting, that when you have someone who looks like you, teaching you, working with you, it's just, it can be more inspiring. The first time I had a female professor in college, that was the best class I ever had. And so our goal really is to have teachers that look like our student population and to work with local community stakeholders, such as Sonoma State, Santa Rosa Junior College, as well as Dr. Martinez, to achieve that goal.
And may I speak to that we, we're able to amass a ton of signatures in a really short amount of time? And I think that that speaks to how currently, within our current infrastructure, we're able to recruit and reach people who need this school. And speaking from a place of equity, I mean, equity isn't just like a trend that'll go away. It's a need that we're working to meet, and we currently have a lot of people working very hard to get the people we need.
Another thing in your charter that read to me like independent rather than dependent was your comments about like class size, having two full-time school psychologists. We have a, a teachers' union, and we have a contract with them, and class size, and a lot of other issues that you brought up here are contractual. And I don't see any mention or acknowledgement of the unions that are, are clearly our partners and how, how that might interfere with some of your goals. Very small classes, two school psychologists, when usually, one psychologist is, takes care of seven or eight schools. So that's just another thing to me that said independent versus dependent.
I was just gonna follow up as well, along the same lines to what Ellen was saying and the question I asked prior. Yet we have PFT in the room right here at our board meeting. And just thinking of, like, if there is a teacher that really feels compelled to want to teach at your school, and they're part of the union, but they are, they're a white teacher, like, what, what is the process, I guess, that you see with that as well? Like, like opening the door, I guess, opening access for any teacher to come and teach at your school, regardless of your makeup of your student body?
I think, again, it comes down to, we, we, we are union members. We understand how to work with, with districts and the union. We were very interested in that. It's an extremely important part of the teaching profession and education. And in terms of recruitment, again, it's about, you've got to have a funnel or an opportunity to actually recruit people from many different backgrounds and many different identities. And that is where we're going to have a more diverse education or staff. And so we still have to go through the process, the normal processes of looking at resumes through the district, through the HR department, you still have to answer or ask the right questions. Everyone comes in, it's an equal opportunity process of recruiting staff. But it also comes down to making sure that those people who need, need to be invited to the table are invited to the table so that we can go through the legal process of, through HR and through, through the union and through the district.
Thank you. Caitlin, go ahead.
I just really want to hear, if you all have the answer, you might not have it to Joanna's question. She literally asked how many people of color signed the petition versus white people, and-
Oh, sorry.
You might not have that.
Sorry about that. Got distracted talking about signatures. Off the top, like, we do not have, like, solid numbers around that. But, you know, the people that were out collecting, Lisa, Yancy, Adi, do you guys want to just kind of make a guess, I guess? I would say it was about 40 to 30% of our parents that signed were parents of color. Kenyatta, Adi, since you guys, I mean, Kenyatta and Adi did the most collection, so I would love to hear what you guys had to say.
Yeah, I would say that that's somewhat accurate. From the time that I was collecting signatures, I noticed that a lot of BIPOC families I were, was talking to, they really seemed interested in the school, because it's providing a lot of unique opportunities that their children can have. And so, yes, I would say it was around, yeah, around 30% from the time that we were out there, give or take.
I can say not only were there a lot of families, BIPOC, Latinx, also families that have students that are LGBTQ+ also signed. So that was, I think that's a need. I think just like the smaller structure, just what, that in place, I think is, was, is what's interesting to families with kids who are going through that process or still questioning who they are. And so that's what I found is that was the most of the signatures that I got were kids who identify as LGBTQ+.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I am glad to hear that. I think we're all, we all want to make sure that any charter school that we adopt doesn't become just another rich white people haven. And so I know that that's the same as you all, that's what, that you're in alignment with that, but I just wanted to.
And I think Caitlin, that's a really good point, and that's why we want to be a dependent charter school. The barrier to entry for a dependent charter school, as you all know, is just much lower than the barrier to entry for an independent charter school. This is a school that I would have been able to attend because the barrier, barrier to entry was lower. It would have been easier for my parents to enroll me. And so our goal is to work with PCS, because we really feel that you guys are on the cutting edge. You're doing the work here in Sonoma County, and we want to be part of that.
Can you, can you elaborate on that? I've never heard that before, frankly, that it was a hard barrier to get into an independent charter?
Yes. So I was at an, teaching at an independent charter last year. I was at High Tech High, which is a network of 16 charter schools across San Diego. Their barrier to entry for students to enroll can be more difficult. For example, sometimes for some independent charters, students and families might have to fill out an application. They might have to submit extra paperwork. We know that if we are able to work with the Petaluma City School District, you all are on the cutting edge of making sure that students have unique opportunities and that you would not, you would be able to allow us to have a really equitable enrollment process. Our goal really is to make sure as many students that want to attend our school as possible can do that. We aren't trying to shut people out. We aren't trying to ask for, you know, some charter schools, they ask for donations or things like that. That's not at all what we are trying to do. That's not at all what we are trying to do. We are trying to work with you all to make sure the students that need us have us.
So also along those lines, I'm just wondering, who in the Petaluma City School District have you worked with to create your charter? Like specifically, like writing the charter? Because again, I think Ellen and other people have brought up like some of the language, like, again, we've got PFT here in the house. Like we have, we fill our classes up to 32 students, but your max is like 25. And again, like Ellen brought up the staffing. So I'm just wondering, I know that you mentioned your school in San Diego and there was mention of a school in Napa, Credo, Roseland Charter Schools. And I like a lot of what you put in there, especially since you talked about drawing students from different areas. I think you talked about having a daily check-in time at some point. I like that. But also I just want to know who you've consulted with because like within our district, because again, there seems to be like a lot of voices from outside of Petaluma in the charter. So who on the charter team, like, I guess, consulted with our, with our district and with our unions when creating this petition?
So we, in terms of like community stakeholders, we've worked with a wide variety of parents and students in the development of this petition. We did a round of empathy interviews with Petaluma students and families. And we've worked closely with teachers from Petaluma High School. I think Shauna Dooley McDonald, I think she's here somewhere, but she was, she's been a teacher at Petaluma High School or in the Petaluma City School District, rather, for 12 years. And she should be, I mean, I don't know why I'm acting like I can see her, but she should be here watching the Zoom tonight in support of us. So she has been a really big champion of our work and very supportive in the development of our charter petition. We've also had, you know, we've met with members of the Petaluma City School Board in regards to development of this, as well as, you know, spoken to during meetings regarding this program. We've spoken to members of the administrative team, Jason Sutter, Liz Chacon, as well as Esmeralda Sanchez, but before she was at PCS. So something, you know, as a dependent charter school, what we would really like to be able to do is work more closely with the awesome district staff, like Maite Ituri and Esmeralda Sanchez and Jason Sutter and Tony. Like, we would really like to be able to work closely with you guys and what you're all doing.
I have a clarifying, oh, did you have?
No.
Go for it. A clarifying question about the fact that this is a 7 through 12 school, right? Correct? So you have a 7 and 8, and then you have a 9, you know, a 9 through 12. So I guess I have, I think I have two kind of questions throughout your petition. You refer to high school. Rarely do you refer to the middle school. And then there's a portion of it that has the middle school. And then I, I guess I just want to, I'm sure you're aware of this, but we have two seventh and eighth grade charters. One is PACS, which is number one in California. U.S. News and World Report. And we have Cherry Valley, both of which are very successful. So I'm trying to figure out what do you, in your concept, which I'm still struggling with, bring that the two schools don't provide?
Well, one thing that we wanted to bring to the table is that PACS has a long waitlist of students trying to get into the school and that was.
So let me, let me just ask you very quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt, but PACS is an accelerated program. Are you at an accelerated program?
We will be offering IB to those students who want to.
You'll be offering an IB program?
Yeah, you want?
I don't, I'm not really sure what Lisa, I'm not really sure Lisa's referring to. So we, we will be offering full project-based learning. Now, I have heard amazing things about PACS and I know many parents in Petaluma who have wanted to get into the PACS program that have been able, but have been unable to do so because of long waitlists. Cherry Valley, we have many families from Cherry Valley who expressed interest in our program. Cherry Valley is an awesome school. I used to babysit for a Cherry Valley family. So those kids are very smart. And so we know that there are families who want an alternative seventh and eighth grade option that isn't PACS or isn't Cherry Valley, maybe because they can't get into PACS or maybe because they don't live close enough to Cherry Valley. Seventh and eighth grade is a really crucial time, as you all know, especially you, Maddie, as an educator. You know, I'm sure you understand that seventh and eighth grade is a really crucial time. And the seventh grade addition was actually suggested to us by a member of the district admin team at PCS. And when he suggested that change, we were really excited because in my previous role, I was an eighth grade teacher. So we have worked to bring a seventh and eighth grade option to our program model. And it has been really a selling point among parents and community members for our school.
I don't think you've answered my question.
I think they're, sorry about the.
Sorry, but I really do want an answer to it about what you bring, what your concept brings that's different.
So project-based learning is actually a fully integrated wall-to-wall approach. So students at every level work together in teams to work on real-world problem solving. And what that does is it allows those students to get their differentiated needs met at every level. So when we talk about project-based learning, it brings up everybody on the team, whether it's a student who needs special ed and special scaffolding, or whether it's a student who needs a more advanced and more rigorous program.
In addition to project-based learning, as you can see from our proposed schedule in our charter petition, we really have an emphasis on community at our school. Similar to PACS and Cherry Valley, our goal is a strong emphasis on bringing together the community. So a morning, as Joanna mentioned, a morning meal for every student, working in time for council or advisory every day. Large chunks of work where students will have time to work on projects, as well as exhibition nights for students to present their projects. Additionally, our curriculum is, is, our proposed curriculum is diverse and our goal is to really ensure that every student sees themselves represented in what they are learning and doing. And so this seventh and eighth grade option would just be an option in the district, but another one for families and students. And I know, Kenyatta, you had something to say.
Yeah, I think what families are interested in is also, if you look at PACS, well, my daughter went to MAPS and then decided not to go to PACS because she had been there for some time. So I think what parents do like is that they could start seventh and eighth grade and then also go through high school, kind of similar to why parents send their kids to Cherry Valley because they're going to go TK through eighth. And so they like keeping them into one space. And so I think some parents like that option of being able to keep junior high and high school kind of compact into one space. And so the teachers know the kids and can kind of move them through those years instead of having to transition several times. I think, so I think that was something that parents really enjoyed. I know that my kid did go to PAC or go to MAPS. And when it was time to go to PACS, she was not as thrilled because it's the same kids. And it's a smaller environment. It's on that sixth grade campus. You kind of felt like you're still elementary. And so I think that was kind of a deterrent for her. So, but it's a, and some kids don't need the accelerated stuff, right? And so they just kind of want to go to seventh and eighth grade, but they want to be in a smaller setting. And so some kids, when they go to the junior, the two junior highs, it's going to be too big of a setting, especially if you're in a marginalized group and you maybe are targeted often, like you just kind of like that small setting, which is why people go to Cherry Valley and stay at PACS and make.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good answer.
Oh, sorry. I just want to add two quick things, the domestic and international travel, and then also the internship and externship. Those are built within the curriculum. So students, like if they have work obligations or family obligations afterward, it's not a barrier for them to participate in externships or internships.
Which are offered at our schools as well already, internships, work, study, all of those programs, we already offer. You know what, my, I guess, reading it, it reads independent charter. And I just can't seem to get past that. A lot of what you've been talking about, I don't really think has been reflected in, in your charter. So that's my issue, really.
We would be happy to work with the district administration or anyone who'd be interested in working with us in our legal counsel to create a charter petition that meets all of your, your needs for a dependent school, should you be interested.
So as, as we field questions from parents around town asking us about your petition, I want to make sure I characterize it correctly and the uniqueness that you're proposing. And so I want to, I would like to hear from you, you know, what are the key words you would want us to convey to parents and community members as they ask us about it? And I can reflect that what I've heard so far that sounds maybe not unique, but, you know, specialized is an emphasis on project-based learning, international travel, small school setting. Is there anything else?
I would say community partnership, so really working deeply with the local community. We're all locals on this call. We all grew up here and we've all lived in this community. You saw the number of letters of support we have received and, you know, we're still working with local businesses who are interested in supporting us in some capacity, whether it's through in-kind donations, hosting students for job shadow, hosting students for internship, coming into our classrooms to do part of the, you know, work on a project with our students. Our goal really is to be deeply embedded in this community. And I think, you know, our faces here on the screen, all as local community members, really says that. Does anyone else have anything to add?
I was going to say, I think, oh, sorry. I can, I was going to say, I think it was Ellen. I can't really tell you, you guys are so small on my screen. I think it was Ellen that said that, like, we already offer internships and we order, offer those things, but like, I had no clue. And I think that part of that is this school is part of the curriculum. Like you don't have to go and seek it out or hunt it out. It's, it's, it's part of it, right? So you're going to school as a senior and you know that like part of your curriculum of your day is going downtown and working at Poppy Bank or whatever, right? Like you know that's part of your day. You're not actually having to go and like, how do I sign up for this or how do I do that? Or it's kind of like, it's all encompassing. I think another thing is just like the outside of, like the outside of like going to a four-year college, right? And so that used to be more part of the public school curriculum. I think we've kind of, kind of shifted away from just, we don't have the funding to offer those things, like the trades. And so I think this school has a focus on that, so where they can do externships and you can go with an electrician to go to work. So things like that where it's kind of just, it's embedded into the program instead of having to seek it out or it's extracurricular, an extra addition to, maybe?
Okay, I just, I just thought that, that response reminded me of another unique thing that you did describe. I think your presentation said you're asking for A through G requirements as a high school graduation requirement, which is not the case at our existing high schools. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So what, what about those kids that don't plan to go to college, want to go to work right away and find, find a lot of the A through G curriculum irrelevant because they already know what they want to do? And they don't want to, I mean, not everybody's going to go to college. That's.
They're not English proficient. And they're not.
That are not English proficient, yeah. So I guess it says those blanket statements, like, you know, these are the percentages we want, or we're going to, we're going to bring kids from all over the county and figure out a way to transport them. Everybody's going to be A through G. As an educator for 30 years, I know those blanket statements just don't work. So that was, that's, I'm, I'm not sure what your answer to that would be, but it's something that troubles me.
So currently I'm in the administrative credential program through SCO. And, you know, one of the things that we talk about is big hairy goals. So you can have a goal of 100%. Having been in the education field for almost 10 years now, I do understand that's not always going to be the case. But that doesn't mean we should go in. I wouldn't say it's Pollyanna, but it's certainly more of an equity-based, sorry, my connection is kind of funky right now, an equity-based approach that, yes, like everyone deserves to have the choice if they want to go to college, that they are able to do so when they get out of high school. And some of the barriers for that are grading practices. The, the barriers that are there have to do with expectations that are set at the school level, that are set in the family, in terms of what they want to do when they get out of high school. One of the things that we're hoping is to really bring CTE, the career tech ed programs in for those kids who want to look at other options. But they should have the choice when they graduate. And, and we want to make sure that we do everything in our power to try to make that happen for every student. If that means that we have to set up outside tutoring, outside of the school day, if there's a way that we have to set up credit recovery or summer, summer tutorials or things like that, then we're really interested in looking at those things so that we can be equitable across the board. It's pretty crazy that in the Latino population versus the white population, there is a 20% difference of A through G eligibility currently in my, my school. And I've got over, almost 60% Latino kids in my school. So we're looking at what are the strategies that we need to do to make that a more equitable, equitable situation? 100% is, may not actually.
Right. So we, we're, we're on this, we're on the same page as well. PCS, we believe there's been a path to success after. But since you did bring it up, I do have to ask, and Ellen, I believe in Maddie brought it up, about the internships and the externships. I think Gian already answered about the, the travel requirements and how that will be paid for. But just in terms of internships and externships, how will this be, I guess, implemented or integrated into the school day without creating a further divide? Because again, we're talking about kids coming from out of Petaluma. I believe you said that you wanted them to have after-school opportunities like sports and extracurriculars. So how do you envision this?
So we've consulted with High Tech High, which again, is the network of charter schools I was working at prior to working on MGAL. They have the nation's leading internship program. So what they do is they have students for three weeks during the academic year. Instead of going to class, they actually do their internship embedded during the day. So students would, if I was interning at like Volby's Restaurant, I would, you know, for five days a week, for three weeks, I would go to Volby's and I would meet with John Volby and I would work with him and do my internship activities. And every week, a teacher from my school would come and check in on me and make sure that I was doing my internship. And I would be, you know, required, be doing my required assignments outside of class. So like, for example, I would still have homework during my internship. I would still have to do a reflection at the end of my internship and do a presentation of learning about my internship. So what did I learn during this internship? You know, what were the takeaways? What were some of the pitfalls, things like that?
Is this a class, Gian? Is this a class that you're describing or is it?
So it would be, it's not, I mean, technically it would be not a class, but it would be during the academic year. So students would not be in academic work for two to three weeks. It would be figured out within our schedule. And obviously, as a dependent charter, we would like to work with you to make sure that our schedule is aligned in that regard. Externships would be similar, but they're shorter. They're only about one week or 10 days. So again, if you, you would pick a local businessperson or a mentor in the community, like Superintendent Matthew Harris, like I want to learn about being a superintendent of schools and you would follow him around, obviously a little less hands-on if you're working with the superintendent, but you would follow him around and shadow him and then, you know, write your reflection, present it, things like that. You know, as a small school, our goal is to really make sure that everyone is able to do an internship or an externship. That's a requirement because it's embedded, like Yancy said, it's embedded in the curriculum. Everyone will be doing it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we close the public hearing? Any questions? Any final words, Gian?
Does anyone else have anything?
I'll let you have the final word, if you have anything.
I think I, I just, I want to say that our process of coming up with what we hope to see in a school was human-centered, design-centered. We started with students at the forefront and in the center of like, how can we address your particular needs in education and where have we fallen short? And what are some things that are working really well for you? And, and I just want to say that our team has been incredibly collaborative. Gia's done an amazing job of putting together the charter and putting together the, the structure. But we've really looked at many, bringing in as many voices as possible into the process and really trusting that the expertise that we need is out there in the community. So if there was something that we don't know, or there's something that we're ready to learn, we're open and ready to, to have those conversations and continue to collaborate.
Thank you. Gianna, do you have anything to add? Let you have the last word.
Thank you so much for your time, Petaluma City School Board of Education, and we're excited to hopefully be able to work with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We are going to have, oh, Matthew Harris, did you have something to say?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. We're gonna have public comment time, so thank you all. I am going to read our public comment policy. All right. And then I will explain, it's gonna be a little bit different for this part of the board meeting. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, provided it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once a part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per-person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter." So we're gonna do things a little bit differently for this public hearing because we have more than 20 comments that have already come in through email that Ashley and I will be reading together. So since we have so many, each is going to only get a minute, but just know that every email that's sent has been replied to, all five, I'll say six, Mr. Harris copied as well. We've all read your comments and letters of support for MGAL. So we are gonna read the ones out loud that indicated that they wanted them to be read, but only for the first minute of your letter. And so we're also gonna open up the chat, I think, after we read these letters aloud, so that anyone who's watching, if you want to comment, you will only get one minute to comment about the MGAL petition. All right, Ashley, take it away.
She's got her water bottle, she's good.
Communications Coordinator of the Month. I'm speaking, he's not my forte, but here we go.
How ironic, you were gonna be...
I know. No, no one can see you, so you're fine. You're not off camera. I got some good practice at it, at, in college, so we're good. Okay. Dear Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, my name is Julian Lanard, and I am a resident of Petaluma. I have two children, one who attends PAX and one who attends Credo High School. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Learners as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. This school is so important to my family because of the core values that the school is based on. We are thoughtful in our approach to our children's education and have sought out schools that align with our values. Our kids have attended LVIA in the Old Adobe School District in their elementary years and both moved on to PAX. Both schools offered inclusion and community, along with a focus on personal excellence. My hope is that our seventh grader can attend a high school in Petaluma that continues with the same focus. My older daughter attends Credo High School as it offers a robust curriculum, is small enough so the teachers can build relationships with the students, encourages creativity and individuality, and helps students build the capacity for compassion. It would be ideal to have a school in Petaluma that could offer this to my younger daughter when she moves on to high school. If there isn't that option, we will be sending her to Credo as well. All right, next one. My name is Dr. Kelly Estrada. I am a professor and chair of the Curriculum Studies and Secondary Education CSE Department at Sonoma State. I am writing to strongly support a vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I support MGAL because of their commitment to equity, community partnership, and global citizenship. Their focus on empowering historically marginalized scholars through a fully-inclusive, sustainable program is reflective of their strong stance in support of the social justice in education, which is the vision and mission of the work we do to prepare future educators at SSU. I ask you, I ask that you vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. Okay? The next one is, my name is Julie Peterson. I live on the east side of Petaluma, but for the last three-plus years, I have sent my children to the Petaluma City Schools District. My fourth-grade daughter attends McKinley Elementary, and after three years at McKinley, my seventh-grade son attends Petaluma Accelerated Charter School. I am also a free of violence writer focused on improving public education for students of color and those from under-resourced communities and a founding member of the Petaluma Team for Inclusivity, Diversity, and Equity Petaluma Tide. Although my family resides in the Old Adobe District, my husband and I have long made the choice that many Petaluma families make to send our children to public schools that lie outside our residential assignment in favor of schools that fit our children's learning needs and our family's values. Prior to attending McKinley, both of our children attended River Montessori Charter School, an independent charter authorized by Old Adobe USD. We believe the school district does an important job of ensuring and delivering educational opportunities to many students, but that diversity of options and operators are critical to ensuring that all students' needs are met, including at the high school level, which currently has far fewer local options to do than other grade levels. Okay? The next, let me make sure, right? The next one is, my name is Debbie Biglow. I live in Petaluma and I have two children who attend Grant School. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. This school is so important to my family because we firmly believe in a project-based, progressive, and affordable, free educational experience for our two creative and sensitive daughters. The middle and high school years are some of the most important developmental years in children's lives, and for them to be in a supportive, inclusive environment that emphasizes global citizenship is exactly what Petaluma needs. I want my child to be able to attend high school in Petaluma, in the Petaluma City Schools District. If MGAL is approved, I will be more likely to stay in Petaluma City Schools District and will not feel like I need to move into another district. If MGAL is not approved, the chances of our daughters attending middle school and high school in Petaluma is very slim. The choices we have, while they work for me, may work for some families, are not going to work for our family. Thank you for reading this message. Okay? Dear Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, my name is Vanessa Ronlin. I live in Sonoma. I have a sixth grader who attends the presentation school outside of Petaluma City Schools. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Learners as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. This school is important to my family because we deeply believe in the school's mission to provide an education with a global perspective and one that will address issues, issues of equity and inclusivity. We believe this perspective will create socially responsible leaders who can create the sustainable change we need for the future. The focus on STEAM and experiential learning are also very important. This kind of learning engages the students and teaches collaboration and critical thinking, skills we believe are critical to the personal and professional growth of our child. There are no other schools in the country that offer this perspective on learning, and we urge you to please pass the charter so our children can have the opportunity to learn in this environment. I am willing to move my child into the Petaluma City Schools District so they have the unique opportunity to attend MGAL. Okay, from Vicky Duffton. I am the step-grandmother of three children who immigrated here with their mother five years ago from Mexico. Their transition has not been easy due to their language and cultural differences. Attending a school like MGAL can make a significant difference in their future. MGAL is committed to celebrating the differences in people, empowering the students, focusing on their self-worth, and building relationships with each other. I am very excited at the possibility of MGAL establishing their extremely needed curriculum and values in Petaluma. With thanks, Vicky Duffton. Okay? Chris Castillo, Verity Rape Crisis Center proudly supports Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders MGAL. MGAL's focus on serving students through a commitment to equity and community partnership deeply aligned to our mission of serving Petaluma and Sonoma County communities. As a service provider in the Petaluma and Sonoma County communities, we deeply understand the needs of students, especially female, trans, and non-binary students. We're open, safe, and non-judgmental spaces to succeed. MGAL will ensure that all students, especially our most vulnerable students, have the space they need to explore their identities and to be their authentic selves. Additionally, we understand that education and empathy can lead to violence prevention. Although a curriculum program that focuses on gender equity and anti-racism, MGAL will ensure that the next generation, oh, it says through, sorry, through a curriculum. It will ensure that the next generation of Petaluma students are empathetic leaders capable of taking on complicated issues such as gender-based violence. Verity is dedicated to partnering with MGAL to provide professional development to their teachers surrounding issues of gender-based violence, as well as ensuring that all MGAL students... All right, next one. My name is Nina Jernum Walters. I live in Petaluma and have two children who attend McKinley Elementary School. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. This school is so important to my family because, being a parent of an LGBTQ+ child, I feel we need a smaller high school with focus and acceptance of diversity. If MGAL is approved, I will be more likely to stay in Petaluma City Schools District and will not feel like I need to move into another district. Thank you for reading this message. I am so grateful for all the work you do in our community. Okay, next one. My name is Susan McGavin. I live in Petaluma and I have a child who is currently in eighth grade, attending a K-12 charter school outside of Petaluma City Schools. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. This school is so important to my family because we prefer less traditional and more experiential learning and globally-focused, project-based learning, especially at the middle, high school, and high school levels. We believe in their mission, vision, and core values. Families like us are having to leave Petaluma to find these educational settings. We would consider moving my child into the Petaluma City Schools District so she has the unique opportunity to attend MGAL. Appreciate you taking the time to read this message. Dear Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, my name is Yvette Niles. I live in Petaluma and I have two nephews who attend McNear Elementary. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I want MGAL in our community because the mission and commitment to inclusion is exceptional and unique. Parents have a right to a choi, to choice, and many parents want options in this town other than what exists now. Thank you for reading this message. I'm so grateful for all the work you do in our community. Okay, next one. My name is Dr. Amber Morabito, and I apologize that I am not able to attend the meeting tonight. I appreciate you listening as my words of support for Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders MGAL are read. My husband and I moved into, moved our family to Petaluma in February of 2020, and what a whirlwind it was as we slowly integrate into and learn our new community, I am impressed by the consciousness of Petaluma, specifically when it comes to the commitment to community, local support, sustainability, inclusion, diversity, and safety. As a woman of color, raising two children that are biracial, bicultural, and bilingual, these tenants are mandatory for our family. When I learned about the initiative to open a school that is grounded in so many values, i.e. equity, community, and global citizenship, that are important to my family, I was elevated. Moreover, as the developmental psychology and professor in higher education, I was also impressed by the school's commitment to partnership and pedagogy. Equally impressive is the school's boldness and intentionality to, quote, "empower historically marginalized scholars through a fully-inclusive, sustainable program, honor the identities of our community members with a curriculum that focuses on gender equity and anti-racism", end quote. Research supports... Okay. My name is Tiana Rice. I live in Petaluma, California, and I have two children who attend McKinley School, one at Petaluma Accelerated Charter and the other at McKinley Accelerated Program. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I believe that MGAL would prove to be an important addition to our community for several reasons. Giving kids the opportunity to learn leadership skills at this stage in their lives is just what our community, county, state, and country need in this day and age. Additionally, Petaluma is seriously lacking alternative high school options, and without choices other than private or the two public high schools the only other charter programs are in neighboring cities. If MGAL is approved, I will be more likely to stay in Petaluma City Schools District and will not feel like I need to move into another district, let alone out of Petaluma. Thank you for your time and consideration in understanding my position. I am so grateful for all of the work you do in our community. Okay, I think this is my last one. This is from Suzie Gallo. The Sonoma Valley Mentoring Alliance, a 25-year-old one, at, the Sonoma Valley Mentoring Alliance, a 25-year-old one-on-one school-based mentoring program publicly supports the Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders MGAL and strongly encourages the Petaluma City Schools District to authorize the creation of the school. MGAL's focus on serving students through a small, community-based school and providing an innovative, project-based learning, community-based school and provide, oh, pedagogy is deeply aligned with our mission to ensure that all students are seen, heard, and know that their voices matter. As a longtime provider of youth services in Sonoma County, the Sonoma Valley Mentoring Alliance understands the myriad of positive benefits that a dynamic, student-centered program can bring. When students are supported and their experiences are enriching, there's nothing they cannot achieve. We have witnessed this outcome in the 2,000-plus students who have participated in our program. The Sonoma Valley Mentoring Alliance urges the Petaluma City Schools District to authorize Magnolia Global Academy of Leaders and is excited about the addition of this opportunity in our community and for our children. We are pleased to endorse a school that will have a tremendous positive benefit for our community.
Good job.
Thanks, Ashley.
All right, I will read the next 14 letters.
And I'll read whatever you want.
Okay. My name is Dan, are you ready? My name is Dan Berger. I live in Petaluma and I have two children who attend McKinley and PJH. I'm unable to attend the school board meeting, I like, and I would like this read out as public comment. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I want MGAL in our community because it offers our family and our community more options and variety. If MGAL is approved, I will be more likely to stay in the Petaluma City Schools District and will not feel like I need to move into another district. Thank you for reading this message. I am so grateful for, for all of the work you do in our community. My name is Okala Scott Bellows. I recently moved to Petaluma and I have a 12-year-old child who currently attends online school at Connections Academy, while we search for the appropriate in-person school for him to attend. I am writing to ask that you vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I want MGAL in our community because our son is both gifted and non-neurotypical. His unusual learning style means that he needs a nurturing and close-knit alternative school with understanding and caring teachers who are accepting of his differences from other kids. If MGAL is approved, I will be more likely to stay in the Petaluma City Schools District and will not feel like I need to move into another district. Thank you for reading this message, and thank you for your work in the community. My name is Katie Listma. I live in Petaluma and I have three children who attend Petaluma City Schools, including PAX, McKinley, and McDowell. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. The school is so important to my family because we believe all children learn differently and have educational options, and having educational options is key to each child thriving. My oldest daughter attends PAX and has been such an incredible experience so far with the small class sizes, the week of welcome, and their ability to take the students to the beach for team building because of the small class sizes. Opportunities to be involved in leadership, offered an end-of-the-year trip to DC and to take an accelerated math class, which she would not have access to at a traditional middle school. Charter schools offer differentiated instruction and have a target audience. Research is clear regarding small schools or schools within schools being the best practice for creating an environment where students feel safe and driven to learn. Magnolia Global Academy will offer one more option for families. My name is Anya and I live in Petaluma. I currently have a second grader in the district, as well as a little one who just began preschool. I'm unable to attend the board meeting, will like my support added to public comment. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I believe MGAL can not only be an asset for students to learn and grow into leaders that promote and model inclusivity, but also be a guiding force for other schools in our community to turn to for best practices on how to approach inequities in anti-racist education. There have been incidents over the past few years that have made me concerned with our secondary school options and already thinking about alternatives, despite being years away from having to make that decision. In particular, the revelations from the Dear Casa and Dear Petaluma Instagram pages are incredibly troubling. We must be better. Our kids deserve better. Our families deserve better. Our town deserves better. And I think having MGAL in Petaluma, a charter focused on anti-racism, inclusivity, and equity, could have a far-reaching impact and become a beacon of strength for a future MGAL student body, the entire district, and all of Petaluma. My name is Paloma Apgar. I live in Sonoma Valley and have one child in eighth grade who attends private homeschool outside of Petaluma City Schools. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. The school is so important to my family because my daughter needs a learning environment where she will have the opportunity to thrive, and that is not something we have encountered in the public schools available to us in our area. Isabel is an avid reader, language lover, and gifted artist. Besides applying herself to our rigorous homeschool curriculum, she had set herself the goal of learning Russian, Japanese, and Spanish by the time she graduates high school. In order for her to achieve those goals, I believe wholeheartedly she needs a school like MGAL where she will find educators and a faculty who will treat her as an individual, recognize all her abilities, and help her reach her aspirations with creative, unique, alternative approaches to teaching that I do not believe I will be able to find for her in the schools in our district. Isabel is a gifted and talented student, and she needs a school where she will be seen for the promising learner she is. Did I read this side? Okay. My name is Kane Lisker. I live in Petaluma and I have two children who currently attend school in Novato because their mother is a teacher there. However, they'll be attending high school in Petaluma in just a couple of years. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. The school is so important to my family because it offers an educational experience and environment that is not found anywhere else in the area. Finding the right academic and social fit for your child is a struggle many parents understand. Not all children thrive in the mainstream public education environment. Many kids, my own included, will not find the acceptance, inclusion, and focus on social justice that Magnolia will provide. When my oldest child, who is going through a difficult time at the school she currently attends, speaks or hears about MGAL, she lights up. When she visits the MGAL website, her excitement about the possibilities of school return to her. She is so thankful that there will be a school like this for her in the near future. MGAL will fill the niche that so many children are desperately searching for. I want my child to -- okay. My name is Jenny Back, and I live in Santa Rosa. I'm a former educator in district and charter schools and have authored successful charter school applications. I have two children who attend school in the Rincon Valley Unified School District. Currently, I am the Executive Director of Sonoma Family Meal, an emergency food relief network that serves Sonoma County. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. The school will benefit the community and those families who attend through its project-based learning approach, emphasis on STEAM and career development, and values of equity, inclusion, and risk-taking. The school will have a tremendous positive impact on Petaluma and Sonoma County communities, and I urge you to vote to authorize MGAL. Thank you for reading this message. I'm so grateful for all the work you do in our community. I am a parent of two children, ages 10 and 12, who have attended PCS schools since kindergarten. While I am unable to attend the school board meeting, I would like this letter incorporated as public comment. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. This school is an important addition to our community as there are no public alternatives to a traditional high school education in Petaluma, despite several alternatives at the K-8 level. A significant number of families, in fact, leave the PCS district for a smaller or specialized high school. MGAL would offer a unique and compelling option for the local community with a project-based learning model and leadership development that has benefited and enriched our children at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. MGAL would also be a wonderful choice for our family as we hope to find a similarly small, supportive, and inclusive setting for high school that has been so effective in facilitating our children's learning and social development. Now with high school decisions on the horizon, we are searching for a school that is dedicated -- okay. My name is Rachel Newman. I live in Petaluma and have an 11-year-old child who is a sixth grader at McNear Elementary. I'm unable to attend the board meeting and would like this read as public comment. I'm writing to ask that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in Petaluma. I want MGAL in our community because I believe that we need more options for high school students and families, especially schools with strong values of inclusion, equity, and whole-person learning. If MGAL is approved, I may be more likely to stay in the Petaluma City Schools District and will not feel like I need to move into another district. As of now, I'm exploring middle school options both inside and outside of our district. Thank you for reading this message. I'm so grateful for all of the work you do in our community. My name is Jessica Dimitro. I have lived in Marin County for eight years. I work in Petaluma for PPSC and Mentor Me. I work closely with Petaluma City Schools. My son attends Novato Charter School. If MGAL was an option, I'd be willing to transfer my son to Petaluma so he could attend this very special school. I want this option for my child due to MGAL's position on being open to all students regardless of gender, race, religion, sexual orientations, ability, and economic status. I ask the Petaluma City School Board to support MGAL and to vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school. One more that came in before we started the public hearing. This is from Sarah Sechek Sebastian. On behalf of Tide and my family, we are so happy that a program like MGAL is being considered for PCS. I think that the curriculum and goals of the school are a wonderful step in providing our students with a secondary program based in equity, project-based, and international learning. Tabitha attends Sonoma Academy in part because they cannot see themselves served independently schools. As a non-binary, multiracial person with ADHD, Tabitha did not see any program that would uplift and serve their needs. Had MGAL been in place already, Tabs would have absolutely been excited about attending. I know you've all talked with the organizing committee and understand the program. It's very exciting to see what the possibilities are in high school when we uplift and support small class sizes, trauma-informed equity, and above all else, students who have continued to be marginalized. Okay, that is the end of the comments that we will read aloud. Any other comments that are sent in, we will respond to by email, and so we're gonna open up the chat to see if anyone has a comment about MGAL. You will also be held to the one-minute time limit for this public hearing, and then we will take a break. Are you still keeping time?
I can.
Okay, that'd be great.
Would that help Ashley?
That would help me.
Do you want me to keep the minute? Yeah. Cool. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Easy.
Did you call the miss?
Are these -- I don't know if she can hear you.
Do you want her to call the people too?
Sure. I cannot see that, so.
Because I can't.
You can see it? Maff, you can see it?
I can't.
Ashley, you can see it?
I'm reading.
Okay. Go ahead and read the name and promote them, and then Caitlin will start the timer. Oh, are people still wanting to comment? If you do have a comment for Magnolia and you haven't already done so, please put your first and last name in the chat, and you will each have a minute. If anyone in the audience wants to comment, you're free to as well.
Fill out a yellow card.
Fill the yellow sheet.
I think we can close the chat now.
Hi. Can you -- oh, cool. Hi, my name is Haley Godbold. I grew up in Petaluma, and I moved back here three years ago because I love it. I am a member of the MGAL design team and a full-time high school teacher at Credo High School. I support MGAL because it is exactly the type of school at which I love to teach, and I wish that a school like MGAL had been available during my schooling experience in Petaluma because it centers community input and individual student well-being in a way that public schools simply do not and cannot. Conceptually, MGAL is born from a love for and commitment to this community, as well as a firm belief in the power of education. But what makes it unique is that all these visions for innovation and inspiration are backed by research, hard work, and local support. I believe in the school. I believe in its goals, and I wholly believe in the people who have made this school their life work. So I urge the Petaluma City School Board to support MGAL and vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Haley. All right, next commenter.
Hi, I'm Patrick Monday, and I have a fifth grader here in Petaluma. MGAL can be a future educational home for my daughter as she makes her transition into young adulthood, a school that will fully support and encourage her budding agency as a young woman in our culture. In leveraging a full STEAM curriculum and a project-based learning program, empowering young leaders, especially from traditionally marginalized communities and genders, MGAL is exactly the kind of school in which my daughter will thrive. We live in a world filled with obstacles imposed by centuries of patriarchy, colonization, and racism, and MGAL's curriculum will work as a powerful antidote to those forces. I believe a vote to charter MGAL is a vote to invest in educating towards a far more diverse, inclusive, equitable, and compassionate local future. With MGAL chartered here in Petaluma, you can be certain my daughter will be in attendance if accepted. I strongly encourage PCS to vote in favor of chartering the Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders and to please find a way to make it work, whether as a dependent or independent entity. Huge gratitude to all of you at PCS. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, next commenter.
Hi, it's Megan Kelly. I'm a member of MGAL's advisory body, and my kids, as you guys know, attend Grant Go Shamrocks. I would love MGAL to be an option for my kids for so many reasons, including the value of risk-taking, inclusion, and social responsibility. As someone that works in the community at PPSC, I appreciate MGAL's focus on helping students to become problem solvers within their own community. Additionally, as a former teacher and school administrator, I love how progressive MGAL's philosophy is, and I would love for my children to have an opportunity to attend this school. I ask PCS Board to support MGAL and vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. All right, next commenter.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Jean Kearns, and I'm a member of the advisory board for MGAL. I was raised in Sonoma County, and I live in Santa Rosa, and my kids are currently enrolled in the Rincon Valley School District. And I would like MGAL as an option for my kiddos because the program and curriculum being proposed is in alignment with my family's values. We believe that inclusivity and diversity enrich and contribute to a better society for all, and I want my kids to have the opportunity to develop critical thinking skills, social emotional skills, teamwork, a global perspective, leadership skills, and I believe that the project-based and experiential learning that's central to MGAL's instruction will provide those skills in a dynamic and vibrant learning environment. And I recognize that introducing new and different programs into the district requires additional work and logistical considerations, but I am hopeful that the members of the board will recognize MGAL as an amazing opportunity for Petaluma City School District. It's a chance to be a transformational leader in the county's educational offerings by creating the first base.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I know a minute's not a lot of time. We have to move on to the next commenter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Faith Ross, and I'm asking that you vote to approve Magnolia. I've listened to what has been said tonight. I have lived in Petaluma since 1975. I have two children who graduated out of the Petaluma City Schools and two granddaughters who attended the Petaluma Schools. With the school focused on equity and inclusivity, students will have staff and teachers that reflect the community so their students feel comfortable in their surroundings. I really support their proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faith. Next commenter.
Hi, my name is Tegan Hoover, and my family and I live in Petaluma, and we have a fifth grader. Since before my daughter started kindergarten, we've been looking for ways to give her an education based on community values, diversity, and inclusivity. When I heard there was going to be a new middle school, high school that was based on those principles, as well as experiential learning and STEAM, and that it was going to be in Petaluma, I actually shrieked with joy. I immediately contacted MGAL to see how I could help get this off the ground. Not every student will prosper in the large Petaluma high schools, and to have another excellent choice here in town within our district would be a huge boon for our kids and our community as a whole. What a powerful thing to have in our community, a real-life example of how the world can thrive with inclusivity and equity. We've assumed we would leave PCS when my daughter reaches high school, but if MGAL is built in Petaluma, we'll be there and will be thrilled to stay within our community's school district. Please approve MGAL for my daughter, for Petaluma's kids, and for our whole community. Thank you for listening, and thank you to all of our community.
Thank you very much. Next commenter.
Hi, my name is Carrie Eisen, and I have children in the Santa Rosa City Schools District and the Rincon Valley Unified School District. And I just want to say that I would definitely move my children into this school if it were to be voted positively for. Anyway, it really -- all the stuff that they talk about are things that I find really important in our family, in our life, and I just want to say as a Korean woman, a daughter immigrant, like, it's really important to me that my son feel -- both my children feel represented and get to talk about -- just see different people. And also, I'm kind of confused about something you said earlier about that it's too difficult for students who are English learners to meet an A-through-G curriculum. That was really disturbing to me to hear from the board members. Thank you so much.
All right, next comment.
Hi, my name is Chad Zibleman. I've lived in Sonoma County for eight years, a member of the advisory body for Magnolia. My children attend Cherry Valley School. I listened to what you guys all had to say tonight. I thought you brought up some thoughtful questions. I appreciate you taking the time to look at the petition, and I think a lot of questions you brought up can lead to revisions, but I encourage you not to lose sight of the need for an alternative charter school that begins at grade seven and goes through high school here in Petaluma. We need to increase choice at the secondary level in Petaluma, and a school focused on equity with a commitment to a small-school model, project-based learning, and a global education is the kind of school that would speak to our values as a city, and I encourage you to vote to support MGAL. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next commenter.
Hi there. This is Renee Ho. She/her-ia pronouns, Ma'or Puta To'los, and always grateful to share space with you all, so thank you for the time. I'm happy that I was able to speak tonight in support of MGAL. I just want to say that I think that any opportunity to help our community with people who are driven -- I've worked with Gianna. It's been a pleasure, and when she says that she's open to working with you all if there's revisions needing to be made, I completely, a million percent, believe that because when she's asked for input on ways to make things better, she is excited to hear those revisions. So she would be someone wonderful to work with. And I have a kiddo who is in the LGBTQI community and others who are not, and this school would be wonderful for all of them because when there's something that affects and is helpful for marginalized groups, that really trickles into everyone. A lot of the work we do in Ma'or Puta To'los has a focus on one group that's marginalized, though it really benefits many. So I just think this is a wonderful opportunity, and anything extra for our students --
Thank you, Renee. I'm sorry to cut you off.
I appreciate you all. Please, please don't. It's okay. I'm grateful for you.
Thank you. We've got to be equitable here. We'll get the minute. Megan, are you there? I think you're the next commenter. What's the last name?
I can't hear you.
How you spell it?
I can't hear you.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Is there a Megan?
I'm a first name.
Is she a promoter?
I'm a promoter.
Megan, you unmute. We can hear you. All right, we can come back to her at the end. Who's next? Do we have any more commenters?
Heather.
Heather?
Hi. My name is Heather Haley.
I didn't hear. Is there a Megan? Did you promote her? Megan, you unmute. We can hear you. All right, we can come back to her at the end. Who's next? Do we have any more commenters? Heather?
Hi, my name is Heather Haley. I have kids in sixth and third grade at Live Oak Charter. I just wanted to say I was really impressed by the presentation and the thoughtfulness and the work that's gone in, and the passion to this school. I'm really excited, and I really hope it becomes a reality because it will be a very serious option for us when our kids come to that age. Both my kids are gender nonconforming, and I've seen how that becomes a barrier in learning, how a lot of energy goes towards bullying that they deal with, and bathrooms they have to choose that should be going towards their education. And I would love a school that not just supports it, but it's integral to their, to the program. And they also, I love the project-based learning. That engages them so well. I would love that. So I hope very much that you support this school and being created. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next commenter. Megan? Megan, if you'd still like to comment, you can do so now. All right, we are going to, is that the, is there one more?
There's just one person not here, but said I would like to express my support. Diana Ruiz.
Okay, thank you, Diana. All right, and with that, we're going to close the public hearing and adjourn for a five-minute break. All right. All right, so we are reconvening. Item seven, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item 8.2. I hope she's still with us. Elizabeth Robertson, Sonoma County Alliance Co-Chair, SEL in the Arts.
I am still here.
Thank you. Hello.
I'm going to share my screen. So everyone I can tell has been very, 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 very patient. And we are very much, I started to kind of feel like one of my students, like going, oh, is it my turn? When's my turn? When's my turn? And I realized that that was very, very relevant to my topic this evening. And it's combining the arts with social and emotional learning and success. So thank you so much to the Petaluma City Schools Board of Trustees and Superintendent Harris for having me speak this evening, as well as, in particular, Trustee Webster for inviting me after spending some time working with me in the Sonoma County Arts Education Alliance. These slides, I've shared them with Superintendent Harris, and I believe he has access to them, but also the URL, the tiny url.com/RobertsonPCSSEL will get you to these slides as well because there are some resources on them that you may want to look at for future use. SEL is what we need at this time for our students, for them to recover, thrive, and succeed. We need opportunities for students to feel supported, culturally sustained, and to feel that they are part of equitable learning environments. Those environments promote both social and emotional competencies for the students and the adults on campuses. We are guided in Sonoma County and throughout our country very much by what Castle is saying, our collaborative academic, social, and emotional learning. And they put together a really wonderful social-emotional learning roadmap for reopening school. And one of the biggest things that they focus on is making sure that the community is focused on, and community building is focused on, and focusing on students' emotional supports so that then they feel safe to learn. And the arts are an absolute perfect partner with SEL. The reason for this is that the arts very explicitly encompass SEL because we have students working on individual, social, and emotional competencies through artistic mediums. What I want to do, rather than just talk about it, is I want to explore some of it with you. I hope that Trustee Webster gave you a little bit of a heads up. I'm going to have us move. I hope that's okay with you. So what we're going to do is we're going to stand up in your chairs, because I want you to experience it like students.
Elizabeth, I gave them no warning.
You gave them no warning! Oh, no! We're just going to do some of this. I won't do the whole thing, but we are going to do a hip-hop brain dance, a dance that helps our brains get ready for learning and helps us to become ready for creative thinking.
This is going to be me.
It's not too hard. This feels good if we do it right. And I'm going to stop it there. This goes longer, but you can see these are some of the things that we can have students do. And I'm wondering if I was the first person in the history of the Petaluma City Schools to have the board members touch their toes. Kind of cool. But the fabulousness of this dance is that it helps students develop core strength. It reduces fatigue and stress. It increases attention and focus. You feel excited and you've been energized. It also may reduce depression by increasing the flow of serotonin and dopamine, those feel-good chemicals. And, I'm going to make it bigger, sorry. And it helps students maintain flexibility through the release of synovial fluid in the joints. So your joints are going to feel better. So we feel more active and ready to learn and ready to focus again. This is an example of something that could be done throughout the school day. So how do we do this? How do we make the arts and SEL happen in our classrooms? First of all, they are really, really linked. Our anchor standards in the arts are create, perform, present, produce. That's all the choice you have, depending on the art form. Respond and connect. Those are our four anchor areas. They combine beautifully with the SEL core competencies: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Through the arts, students are given scaffolded opportunities to experience each of these core SEL competencies. Now, I know the first thing that I always ask is, I think, great, that's a wonderful thing, but how do we fund it? How do we make this happen from a financial perspective? So one of the beauties of the fact that social-emotional learning is such a big deal in our education system right now is that there's funding for it. And anywhere you have social-emotional learning, you can also have arts incorporated. So there's lots of different funding opportunities. We have immediate funding, and these are all acronyms and forms of funding that I know the board is going to be familiar with and our administrators are familiar with. So we can use some of the current recovery funds and our ESER funds in our emergency funds to fund SEL. And when we do that, we can also find entry points for the arts. We also can think long-term. How do we continue once we go back to our traditional funding formula? How do we continue? One of the ways that we can do that is to include it in the LCAP, and I'll show an example in just a moment. We can also, at the site level, incorporate into CIPSAs. That is something actually that we have done where I teach in Windsor. We've included arts as a, as part of our CIPSAs to help students increase their achievement in math and English language learning. One of the great things that a lot of people don't know about is the arts can be incorporated into our Title I, II, IV, and if you have five, I don't know if Petaluma has rural funding, but maybe a little bit. But each of those buckets of federal money, because the arts can address the basic needs, the improvement needs, the support and academic enrichment needs of students, it can be included as part of those funding packages. And we can also, we can strengthen that even more by having the arts and SEL work together. Other ways of funding programs can be to have collaboration with after-school enrichment programs. As we're expanding and strengthening after-school enrichment, having strong SEL and arts components really make it so that the programs can have some meat to them. Also, finding ways to collaborate with special education and migrant ed programs. For example, in Windsor Week this past summer, we did our migrant ed summer school, and we combined it with arts-integrated learning and SEL learning. And we were able to fund the majority of the program through migrant ed, and, but we were able to have students have even more learning outcomes and deeper learning outcomes through the arts and SEL. And then there are also a, there are lots of public, state, and national grants, local grants, that can actually are specifically for improving students' social-emotional health as well as support for arts education. And there are also private grants, and that's something that Creative Sonoma and the Arts Educational Alliance support in school districts and arts organizations throughout the county. So that's something that is definitely a conversation starter. One of the things that is very helpful is that Create California, in collaboration with Arts for LA and Arts for All, have created a LCAP and the arts template. And this is wonderful because it gives direct examples of how you can word your LCAP to include the arts. And this is something that's, I've got it, I have it linked here. There's also an entire LCF and the arts toolkit, and they're starting to include SEL as well. And it's a way for, to find that we are, by using the arts, using SEL, we can meet other goals, other complementary goals as well. So some of the resources, first of all, Petaluma, you guys are in a great position because you have some leaders already in your community. McNair, in particular, under Liza Eichert, but also continuing with especially the sixth-grade team and some of the other teachers at the site, are, they are absolutely dedicated to arts integration, and they have some amazing teachers that have, have provided arts-integrated instruction that they are continuing to integrate and innovate. Mary Collins, that is, arts integration is a core tenet of the school. And then two organizations that are there to support schools, in addition to the Art Docent Program within the school districts, they, there is the Petaluma Arts Center in particular. They have been spearheading and adopting training and instruction in visual thinking strategies for students, using the arts as a key literacy and thinking through understanding and using evidence to speak, listen, and write. And also Petaluma Paints, helping with arts integration throughout the district. Also, there are some wonderful homegrown leaders. In particular, from Cherry Valley, we have Lisa D'Amico and Gina Richmond, who have now come together to create some really amazing arts-integrated SEL curriculum. And they are really rich resources that are homegrown from Petaluma. Another option that I really wanted to share is there is a matrix that has been put together by Creative Sonoma that takes the California Visual and Performing Arts Standards and puts them as a crosswalk with the Castle Social and Emotional Learning Competencies. If you want to go deeper with this, there is another organization in New Jersey that has started to put together arts-integrated SEL lessons that there's actually examples, and they have a matrix. And this is actually based on the New Jersey model. We also have some wonderful SEL links through Creative Sonoma, and all of this is in keeping with the Sonoma County Arts Education Framework. And any, any plans to work with, within arts integration is really one of the things to look at, is to look at what are those supports within the framework. And I want to just, I think I'd be remiss if not calling out some of our wonderful Sonoma County organizations that help support both SEL and arts integration. Luther Burbank Center for the Arts, one of our absolute key partners. They're even doing a wonderful diversity, equity, inclusion workshop for the arts. There's a three, three series, three session series that they're going to be doing in November through December. So really amazing. A lot of our programs are also culturally responsive programs, such as the ones at Sebastopol Center for the Arts and La Luz. Boys and Girls Club just got a pretty sizable federal grant to collaborate with several local school districts to bring arts integration and SEL curriculum to school districts as well at, in Sonoma County, as well as trained teachers and after-school employees. And that's going to be under the I Amplify banner, which is an extension of Windsor's I Aspire program. So what's going to be happening is we're going to be looking for SEL entry points within the existing arts-integrated curriculum. And that's going to be an opportunity for collaboration with Windsor as the lead, but also districts throughout the county, including Petaluma is invited to help be part of that conversation. And then there are lots of state, national, and resources. One of the biggest ones is CISA. They have really gone all in on SEL and the arts. As I mentioned before, New Jersey, that's this arts ed SEL. They, if you go to them, they are amazing. And then we also have leaders with Create California. But then four of our county offices in California have really gone and become leaders in SEL and the arts, and that's Humboldt, Riverside, Los Angeles, and Fresno. And so there are so many resources and so many avenues to explore that, there's so much we can do. So what I want to do at this point, in addition to having questions from the board, is to really... is to really say that Creative Sonoma, myself, and other, our other partners within Creative Sonoma are here as a resource and a thinking partner for the district and the board as they, as and if they decide to look into expanding social emotional learning in the arts throughout the district to, to support all students. Thank you. I don't want to share, stop sharing.
Any questions? Anyone? Any questions? Go ahead, Matt.
I just wanted to thank you, that was wonderful, reinforcing, it's informative, I'm so glad you got us up. That's the answer. Yes! And, and, you know, I, I, I really appreciate the fact that you mentioned LCAP and that we can put that in there. We're about to start that again. And so, anyway, and thank you, Ellen, for really pushing for this. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, is the, is the LCAP and the arts template online? Is that easy to find?
It is, and the, I will, in just a moment, I'll put the link to my slides. There's actually a direct link in my slide deck for that template.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much for your presentation and for your patience.
Thank you, it was a pleasure to speak with you, thank you.
And thank you for helping us move.
Always.
All right, next up, we have trustee area redistricting presentation.
So, we have, you see Brandon Ashley? He's going, can you promote him to a panelist? Oh, wonderful. So, hi, hi, Brandon, thank you for joining us this evening.
Hello.
Brandon's going to be sharing just a little information about redistricting, the, the process and sort of where we're at.
Perfect, you mind if I share my screen now?
Please do.
Great, is that, is that up, can everyone see it?
Yes.
Perfect, so hello and welcome, everyone. Today, we're going to be doing a little presentation about the overview of the California Voting Rights Act. First off, before we begin, I'll introduce myself. My name is Brandon Lalonde, and I'm an attorney with Fagan, Friedman, and Bullfrost. And we're the firm that's helping the district through its election transition process. The purpose of today's discussion is to first off, introduce the CVRA and kind of explain what that law is. Next is to discuss potential exposure that the district faces and potential litigation under the broad language of the CVRA. Thirdly, we're going to discuss any options that the board has and determine next steps, if any. And then lastly, I'll be here to answer any questions that you all have. So, before we get into what's permissible and what's not permissible, I think it's important to first talk about what the California Voting Rights Act is. So, this is California legislation that took effect in January 1st of 2003. And it prohibits the use of at-large election systems in specific scenarios. And those scenarios are when that election system impairs the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of that, of their choice, or its ability to influence, influence the outcome of an election. One of the problems with this specific language that districts face and public entities at large face is that it's difficult to, to know when a particular election system impairs the ability of a protected class to influence the outcome of an election. So, that's going to take us to our next slide. The CVRA is far broader than the Federal Voting Rights Act because it does not require intent, whereas the federal does. So, in these California cases, it's much easier for a plaintiff to bring a claim and bring a successful claim against a government entity. The proof of intent on part of the voters or the elected officials is not required. So, there's no intent discrimination prong for the California Voting Rights Act. Along with these California Voting Rights Act claims, what tends to make these sort of claims and lawsuits expensive is the right to the attorney and expert fees on behalf of the plaintiff. So, a prevailing plaintiff would be able to recover their, their reasonable attorney's fees and expert witness fees. And this is in addition to what the district would be paying their lawyers to defend the suit. If the district wins, it's specifically stated in the law that they are not guaranteed or granted the same right to attorney's fees. So, it's sort of a one-sided law that puts the district at a disadvantage in these sort of cases. The next few slides are going to be major CVRA litigation to date and the costs to each of the public entities and districts that were involved. So, in the Gomez case, the public entity was required to pay out $110,000. Sanchez, one of the bigger ones that we've seen, $3 million. And the California Court of Appeal in that case affirmed that the CVRA was constitutional. Later, in Madera Unified School District, a $1.2 million award was later reduced to just under $200,000, but still quite a sizable sum. And then in Tuller, there was a $500,000 award against the public entity. And again, it's important to note that these amounts do not account the fees that the district paid to defend the case. One of the more recent and larger cases that we have seen is Hattlegi versus Palmdale, versus City of Palmdale. And in that case, the plaintiffs argued that the city's at-large method resulted in boat dilution of Latino and African-American residents. The trial court determined that a violation occurred, the city appealed, and this process ended up resulting in a settlement in 2015 for over $4 million plus interest. And the city also paid in excess of $1.5 million in attorney's fees. So, I think all of these, including the, the Pico Neighborhood, which is the most recent case out of Santa Monica, this one is still ongoing, but it's estimated that the city has spent over $5 million on its own defense, and plaintiff's attorneys are seeking $22 million. And in this case, the litigation now is before the California Supreme Court. Yes?
I have a, is this not on? I was just wondering, who, who, who gets that money? Who does that money go to besides attorneys?
So, the prevailing plaintiff, and, and we'll get into this a little bit later, but the plaintiff who files a demand letter is entitled to up to $30,000. And that is if the district, even if the district transitions. This sort of, this litigation that's ongoing often is, well, most of the, the costs are attorney's fees. So, it would be going to the, the plaintiff's attorneys. And I can address that more at the end of the presentation if you'd like.
Thank you.
So, what we've been talking about is a bi-trustee election system, so a bi-trustee area election system. There's two different types of election systems. There's an at-large election system wherein all of the governing board members would be elected by the total number of residents or eligible voters for the district. There wouldn't be any sort of trustee areas. However, with a bi-trustee area election system, there, the district would be divided into five or seven trustee areas. And then only individuals that reside in each one of those areas would be able to vote for their specific trustee member. But it's important to remember that even if the district does transition to a bi-trustee area election system, trustees one, two, three, four, and five still represent the totality and entire district. What's important about these trustee area election system is that they're the only safe harbor to a CVRA claim. So, as we were just talking about, the language of the statute for violations of the CVRA refers to not bi-trustee area election systems, but at-large systems. So, if the district wants to protect itself and have a safe harbor from such a claim, then they would need to transition to a bi-trustee area election system.
Brandon?
Yes?
I get that the Voting Rights Act identifies the bi-trustee system as a safe harbor. Does the law claim that the bi-trustee selection system would prevent a protected class from being marginalized in the election?
No, I don't believe that the, the law goes that far, but in many instances, that has been the effect. Whereas the, let's, for example, in the Santa Monica case, there was a lot of back and forth about whether the bi-trustee area system was going to be effective or not. So, they had to work with the plaintiff's attorney and the prevailing plaintiff to kind of draw maps in a particular way that would increase the minority voting power and avoid protected class vote dilution. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, and I'm just curious, the, the way that it would protect a protected class, I think it doesn't assume that they would have to be living in proximity of each other, in the same district essentially?
So, that, that is one of the criteria that the demographer will look at is you have to keep the trustee areas contiguous. So, you can't have, we won't have a map in front of us today, but a circle in one area that kind of doesn't connect. So, two kind of circles that, that don't connect, those can't be a trustee area. It has to be contiguous. So, to answer your question, yes, the individuals would have to live close to one another. And it's not a perfect system by any means, but the legislature has determined that this is the sort of system that helps to promote minority and protected class voting interests. The recent legislative changes affecting the, the process would be under AB 350. This added an additional pre-map public hearing requirement. You have to have two of these pre-map public hearings within 30 days, and it also institutes transition timelines and litigation safe haven. So, as soon as the district starts its transition, which would hypothetically be today, there would be 90 days of a safe harbor transition period. And there's also a plaintiff fee reimbursement that I referenced earlier. My understanding is that there has not been a demand letter received. But if there was one, then that plaintiff, if the district decided to make its transition after receiving that demand letter, then the plaintiff would be entitled to up to $30,000 in costs. So, if the district decides now to initiate its transition and later receives a demand letter, there would be an argument that there, that that demand letter was not the reason why the district created its transition, and therefore, the plaintiff would arguably not be entitled to those costs. As I talked about earlier, today, we're looking at the initiation resolution. And if the district decides to take that first step, then the next slides will address the next steps. Well, I think that, that'll be our first step. The first step is to pass a resolution of the, of the governing board declaring the intent to establish the bi-trustee area election system, and that starts the 90-day safe harbor window. The second step would be to hold those newly enacted pre-map public hearings. This is prior to when the demographer creates the maps, but either myself or another attorney with my firm would show up with the demographer, and we would listen to feedback from the community. And the demographer would take that feedback and public testimony into drawing and creating the draft map scenarios. And two of those need to take place within 30 days. Following the pre-map step, the demographer would be required to draw the draft trustee area map plans. And these, I think, seven or eight bullet points are criteria straight out of the law that are required to be followed in drafting that map. First, complying with the US Constitution. Second, achieving population equality as nearly as practicable. The third is complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Next is voting, districts shall be geographically contiguous, which is what we talked about earlier. Preserving local communities of interest, if there are any, and that's the kind of thing that we'd like to hear from the community. Geographical compactness, so the courts don't really like seeing trustee areas that are elongated and don't really make sense on a map, but more trustee areas that look similar enough to one another. And importantly, the map drawing process cannot favor or discriminate against an incumbent political candidate or political party. So, once the draft map plans are, are drawn by the demographer, the district will also hold three more public hearings on those map options where the public will let us know again what they want to see and what they either like or do not like about the draft maps that have been produced. Following that, the, the, on, on the third of those public hearings, the district will determine which map that it wants to select and go forward with. And then that takes us to the fifth step where that map option is sent to the County Committee on School District Organization for approval. And if we follow the process as we have with other districts, we believe that the county committee would approve as they have in the past. Ordinarily, once, once approved by the county, the transition takes place on a ballot approval by the electorate. But the process that we have been following and other districts have been following is seeking a waiver from the State Board of Education for the election requirement because those sorts of elections can be costly to the district. And if the district fails to, so if the election fails and the district can't implement a new trustee area map, then the district will remain open to, to liability as an at-large system. The CDE is dialed in on this issue, and we have, I, I don't believe we, we've seen any denials from the Department of Education. The waiver again will expedite the implementation of the new election system, avoid uncertainty, and reduce the costs that, that we referenced earlier. Senate Bill 442 was recently passed, and this is effective January 1st, 2022. This amends the education code to make it easier for school districts with election systems governed by the city charter, which is my understanding, takes place here, to transition to bi-trustee area election systems. And importantly, it allows the district to transition upon approval of the county committee without that waiver requirement that we just discussed. However, this is a new kind of area of the law, and this is something that we'll have to discuss going further whether the district wants to still seek a waiver or whether they want to follow the, the new path that has been carved out by Senate Bill 442. So, the final steps in the transition, file a new voting area plan. Once it's been approved by the county committee, you file that with the county registrar of voters, and you hold governing board elections under the new bi-trustee area election system in 2022. Additional things to keep in mind, once the transition is made to a bi-trustee area election system, there has to be adjustments following each 10-year census. Because the census information just came out and the district is starting its transition, we're going to be using the most up-to-date information. But when the next census comes out, the district will have to take a look at hiring the demographer or some other way of determining whether or not the new census data has changed things in the district so that the adjustments in the boundaries would have to be made. Final thoughts, this transition does not change the overall district boundaries, and it does not change the school's attendance boundaries. And like I mentioned at the beginning, this does not change how the district is governed. It's still one district with common goals and challenges. And whether you are from trustee area one, whether you are a board member or trustee governing area one, it is still the responsibility of all board members to look out for the entire district in, in its totality. And if anyone has any questions, that's the end of my presentation. I, I think it's important to note that- I think it's important to note that this is, sorry, go ahead.
Say this is item 14.1.1, the resolution on the agenda.
And I understand there's a lot of information to take in and digest, but this is going to be a process. I think we just said that there's going to be at least five more public hearings on the topic, two pre-map, three post-map. So we're going to be able to talk through any issues that arise, and I'm going to be happy to answer any questions at that time as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So if we pass this tonight, we're in our 90-day leave us alone, you can't sue us period, right?
Yes, the safe harbor. That's correct.
And we're on the clock for 30 days to have the first public hearing.
That is correct as well.
All right. Anything else?
I have a question about the lawsuit, the letter. Do they have to show, do they have to show that there's been, you know, it doesn't have to be intent, but that there is an imbalance? So do they have to show that, like in our case, we don't really have a huge imbalance? We represent all parts of the city. So would the letter be less likely to come because, you know, we basically get from the redistricting what we have now? I mean, you know, I mean, but in the future, that might not happen. I understand that. But at least right now, would it be, I mean, I'm just wondering.
No, it's a great question. It's a great question, because that's exactly what Santa Monica is arguing before the California Supreme Court now. The plaintiff in that case alleged that there was a dilution of Hispanic voting power. And the district came back and argued that there was only, I think, in that particular case, less than 5% Hispanic Latino population. So that it was going to be incredibly hard for the plaintiff to show that there was any vote dilution. The court didn't like that argument, and that's why we take the stance that we do, that it's such a low bar for plaintiffs to reach. It really only takes almost anecdotal evidence of, I wanted this person to win, this person didn't win. And now I think that my voting power has been diluted. It's not quite that simple, but it is a very low bar. If that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Hi, Brandon. I need clarification on a couple of things that you presented. So one is, can you tell us what are the protected classes that the Voting Rights Act protects? Secondly, because my guess is it's not, it's not a geography, it's not income either. But then on your slides, when the criteria to use to map out districts, one of them talked about the community of interest. That, I don't think that's a protected class, is it?
No, it's not. Protected classes, I think, is defined federally. But in this case, and in CVRE litigation, it's been limited to racial protected classes, racial minorities. To answer your question about communities of interest, in a few of the communities that we've dealt with in the past, there are old or historical communities that would like to be kept together. So they told the demographer that we don't want these communities being split up, even if that makes sense geographically. Let's say a freeway runs through the community. They want to keep that community of interest together because they have shared experience and shared cultural values, things to that effect, that they wanted to make sure that all of that was encompassed in a single trustee area and not divided. It doesn't happen every time, but we more hear that from the public if there is any particular communities of interest that they want to be protected.
And so, and how does the protected class of race, ethnicity, how does that play into the drafting of boundaries?
This will be a great question to ask the demographer, because they have the technical experience and knowledge on that end. But what I do know is that they look at what the total number of, or the total percentage, I should say, of protected classes in each area that they are dividing the district into. And then with the way they draw the lines, there is some way that they can actually increase the voting power of those protected classes. And that's something that the demographer highlights in the future presentations, that if there was 12%, as a district average of Hispanic Latino, now hypothetically, in trustee area one, two, and four, the voting power is above 12%, for example. We've seen that in the past. And that goes across the spectrum of Asian, Hispanic Latino, African American. They highlight all of that in their analysis.
So previously, you had said that that if it impairs the ability for protected class to elect candidates or influence an election, am I hearing you right, that there's really like no threshold? Like there's no makeup of any current board or city council or anything that, I think Maddie brought it up, that could keep a lawsuit from happening?
No, there's really no threshold or floor that the district can reach. Because we've even seen situations where the candidate of choice was not actually of the same ethnic background as the prevailing party. So the prevailing party wanted hypothetically, a white person who, that's who they wanted to win because they believed that that person could protect their interests. And then that person lost to, for example, another white person, then that wouldn't, in that particular case, that still wasn't a good enough argument for the court. So it's a really, really low bar.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you all for having me, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Did you get up? Did you get up and dance?
I did, and I'm not going to promise anything, but I might bring a hip-hop routine next time.
All right. Item 8.4, Chris Thomas, enrollment report.
Thank you for your patience, too.
For those of us with eyes that would prefer to see.
The old people.
Well, actually, Sandra. Do you guys want this? Is there enough of them?
Okay.
All right. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm going to go through this quickly because I know we're all a little tired. And the last thing you want to do is look at a bunch of spreadsheets. So I did a PowerPoint. So this is an enrollment update. You know, we've talked about over the past several months, kind of this whole idea of the cliff coming up in 2223, because we know our enrollment last year was impacted by the pandemic. We knew anecdotally it was being impacted this year, but this is actually going to quantify what that looks like. We actually have month one enrollment that we're sharing here. We, month two ended last week. We're still in the process of finalizing all those numbers. And looking at preliminary reports, it might have changed by 15 to 20, but it hasn't changed dramatically since month one. Okay? So month one is what we're going to look at. So what I'm doing here is I'm really comparing by grade span, TK to third grade, fourth through sixth grade, seven, eight, nine, 12, between 2018, 19, pre-pandemic, if you will, 2019, 20 was the first pandemic year. We were only open through March 13th. 2021, full pandemic year, and of course, our current year, 2122. So you can see the comparison on the slides. And you can see at the very bottom, I'm giving you the variance by grade span between 2021 and 2122, just so you can kind of get a flavor for what's happening with our students and by which grade level. You can see back in 1819, we were at 7,528. That's per seabeds. That's our official enrollment. We dropped by seven, which is considered flat. That's a very small variance, 7,521 in 1920. This is total, and I should clarify that. So thank you for asking. This is Pedaloma City Elementary, Pedaloma Joint Union High School, Pangrove, PAX, and Cherry Valley. Does not include Live Oak, the independent charter. Okay? So this is everybody except for Live Oak. You can see that during the full pandemic year, we actually dropped to 7,377, or a drop of about 144 students. And that's our official enrollment count based on seabeds. So we're comparing October to October to October, and then we're comparing to month one. And you can see we then drop an additional 197 students. So that's 340 students in two years that we've dropped, and that is a dramatic shift for us. Like I said, I do think the numbers of 7,180 might come up closer to 7,200 by the time we're looking at month two. But I don't think it's going to be shifting dramatically. Going on to the next slide, feel free to stop me if you guys have questions. I broke it down then, that variance, I've broken it down by school. It's not going to add up exactly to the 197 because I didn't leave, I left off special day. I left off non-public school and home hospital. I left those off. I just wanted you to see by school site, where did we have challenges? So you can see Grant, McDowell, McKinley dropped, McNear even, you know, anywhere from six to 20 students. Individually, that's not significant, but when you start adding them all up, it does become significant. You can see Mary Collins and Pangrove are pretty flat or growing. That's a good thing for us because charter schools are not protected. They're not held harmless. We actually got hurt last year because that 2019, 20 ADA became a cap for us. So we grew actually last year at Pangrove, and we didn't get the benefit of that additional ADA, even though we added staff. So we projected growth. This isn't as high as I had hoped, but at least we are still seeing growth in those two schools. And then Valley Vista, you can see that 21, that's actually a pretty significant reduction, more so than at McNear, because if we compare the population, they only had roughly 200 students, 206 students. So to drop 21 by percentage is much more significant than McNear dropping from, say, 375 to 355. And then independent study, we had about four students last year. This year, at the elementary level, we have 21, so it's a, or 25, so it's an increase of about 21 students. Continuing on with the secondary, you can see the variances again by school. Now we're starting to see some bigger numbers. So you can see Kennelworth dropped about 51 students, Pedaloma Junior High about 12. Again, when you look at the population of students, Pedaloma Junior High has shown a trend of declining over the past few, couple of years, three or four years. Kennelworth has been pretty flatter growing, and they're about 800 students, where Pedaloma Junior High is about 500 students. So again, on a percentage basis, 12 is a much higher percentage than the 51, well, at least relatively speaking. And then you can see PAX is holding steady with an increase of five. Costa Grande dropped 50, Pedaloma High School dropped 63.
These are also last year's drops, right?
No, this is just last year to this year. This is just.
This is 20, oh, so this is not pandemic year. This is, this is right now.
This is this year, month one, right?
Because we actually dropped more this year than we did last year over the prior year, which was surprising, but I'll give you some anecdotal things of what I think about that. San Antonio, again, dropped by about eight, Carpe Diem nine, Sun Mountain two. Valley Oaks is up 27. That's, that's at seventh through 12th grade. And I broke it down, seventh and eighth is 14, ninth through 12th is 13. So there's about 14, 15 students at Pedaloma Junior High for the independent study program. There was one student in seventh grade or eighth grade last year. They weren't at Pedaloma Junior High, but that's why the variance is only 14. Now here's some historic comparisons to kind of give you kind of where we've been. I only went back to 2012, 13, which is roughly 10 years. So you can see 7,533, 7,601, 7,492, 7,500, 7,480. You see ups and downs, and other than 14, 15, it's relatively flat. When you look at that curve over those three or four years, 7,480, 7,434, but then we pop back up to 7,528, 7,521. So you can see, again, if you're looking at a trend line, 7,533 to 7,521, from 12, 13 to 1920, that's pretty flat. We're up, we're down, we're up, we're down. This is why prior year P2 enrollment protects us. Because if we have a drop, like we saw in 1718, we can still use 16, 17, ADA. So that's why that prior year, that prior year P2, it helps protect us. When you have two years in a row, like 15, 16 dropped in 16, 17, and then 17, 18, now all of a sudden, we're getting hit by 20. But 20 in a district of 7,500 is, you know what I mean, is relatively low. Now you see the 2021 drop and the 2122, and that's when those combined numbers become significant. So, you know, I've talked about when I brought the budget to you last June, we talked about the cliff and that we knew that our enrollment was dropping. We didn't know exactly how much. This is far more significant than what we were projecting, especially at those secondary schools. We knew that some of our elementaries were dropping, but the secondary, we actually staffed them at higher numbers. Now, we're still funded on 2019, 20 ADA, so the fact that we've staffed a little bit more liberally, if you will, made sense, given the learning loss and given trying to have a bit smaller classes, et cetera. But we had not planned on being staffed at quite that level. Some of it's because our enrollment literally didn't show up. The kids didn't show up. If you look down at the bottom here, I put a note, preliminary cohort projections for 2223. So literally what I did is I very quickly, I didn't put a lot of assumptions in. I simply said, if in 2223, our transitional kender is relatively flat, we have 106 as a month one, I projected 110, you know, using round numbers. And if kender comes in at about the same level, roughly 335 students, and I assume every current kender right now becomes a first grade next year, and every first grade becomes second grade, and so on and so forth cohort, no attrition assumptions, just purely, every student we currently have, other than 12th grade, which matriculates out, shows up next year, we would be at around 7,000 students. So it's an additional significant drop of 180 kids. Now, there's a long way to go between now and next year. There's a lot of development that's happening along the river and several pockets around our side of Pedaloma for our elementary schools. But I wanted to give the board really a heads up that this is a very precarious trend for us. We're certainly not alone. There's lots of districts in the state of California nationwide who during this pandemic have experienced these types of declines, actually probably more significant than this. And we know that this could change as we're gearing up for 2223. We've got transitional kender that's going to start rolling out for full kender phased in. So we know we'll probably be enrolling more students for that. That's going to help our elementary schools. I looked at the data to say, why would it drop so much? Part of it is we have a very large 12th grade class, about 895 students total. The 11th grade class is like about 100 students less. And the 12th grade class is our largest. And the twelfth grade class is our largest class. And so on the natural, if everything else stayed the same, right? We'd lose a hundred kids right off the bat because that class matriculates out, and we don't have an equivalent class size coming into seventh grade when we look at the feeder districts coming in. And I would also tell you, that's part of the challenge. I did not go through and analyze all of our feeder districts because they don't have their C boards, C beds reported yet, so I don't have their data for this year yet. But I did look at last year's C beds, comparing it to October of nineteen, and they all were down, but most of them were down, you know, anywhere from fifteen to twenty students each. Now they're much smaller, so fifteen to twenty is, is a whole class for them. But that cumulatively, with seven or eight districts feeding into us, can make a chunk of, of loss as well. I haven't factored in any of that. That's probably tying into some of the one ninety-seven this year, however. So this is really kind of a, a heads up that as we're looking at enrollment projections, this is what we're seeing. We're not shocked by it because, like I said last June, we knew that that enrollment drop-off was going to come. Right now, in, in the law, we're protected by being able to use nineteen twenty, two thousand nineteen twenty ADA for last year and this year, not including the charters. There is some legislative relief that they're working on because many of the large urban districts like LA Unified are very concerned about this. They've lost thousands of students, tens of thousands of students. And so there's a lot of pressure on the legislature, I believe, to extend the, hold harmless into next year. And that will help us significantly if that comes through. But if that doesn't come through before first interim, I'm going to be obligated to do our multi-year projections, making some pretty dramatic assumptions for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm hoping that there will be some legislative fix on the horizon before that. But I wanted to give you a, a heads up, and certainly Matthew, so that when I do present first interim, you guys aren't shocked by it. We're going to be tracking enrollment very closely. Am I missing anything? Again, we're hoping that some of the new development, there's a lot of new houses, like I said, being built, finished along the river. That could produce some relief for us. But it's kind of a wait and see. And again, transitional kinder, we're going to be talking about bringing revisions to board policy now that we know we have the implementation. So as we're gearing up for registration, we can enroll more TK students. And that will help us in the next two to three years as that gets rolled out. So with that, sorry to end on such a rosy note, but are there any questions?
I have a very theoretical one. At what point does a district move into a basic aid? Because our, our houses are like crazy expensive, especially in our elementary district. So at what point could we possibly move into a basic aid? And then, and then how, that changes this tremendously, right?
It could, however, we're, we're pretty far away. I'm, I'm pulling up, I've got the fiscal report, fiscal stuff up right now. No, we're pretty far away. Our state aid, just to give you an idea. So when your basic aid, essentially, basic aid district, all it means, there is no choice. You complete your LCFF calculations. And then you, you take the total amount, that's roughly seventy-four million for us. So our LCFF says, across all our charters, our two districts, we're entitled to roughly seventy-four million. If our local property taxes are seventy-one million, we're not basic aid. Because we're getting three million from state aid. The state backfills the difference. If we are at seventy-five million, then we're basic aid. Because basically, our local property taxes exceed our entitlement, and we get to keep the, the larger of the two. We don't give that extra money to the state. As a local district, we keep our local property taxes. But we're pretty far away from that, so-
And we don't, we don't rely on ADA as a basic aid district.
Well, you still do the calculations.
Right.
You still do the calculations, but a basic aid district, when they decline in enrollment, their entitlement goes from seventy-four to seventy-two to sixty-nine, right, as you're declining in enrollment, like ours will do. But your local property taxes are still going up. So the more you decline in enrollment, the more your property taxes go up, the more you are getting closer to basic aid status. There's a lot of districts that are right on the cusp. What I want to share with you is, let me just look at really quickly our state aid, because our state aid will tell you how far away we are. And we're pretty far away.
No, because so many people are still paying like five hundred dollars a year in property taxes.
So to give you an idea, our state aid is around thirty-four million. So we're thirty-four million away from basic aid. Our property taxes, our local property taxes would have to go up by roughly thirty-four million for us to, or let's say that our ADA really, no, we're far away. We're far away. So usually what happens is, so when I was in my past life, we had two separate districts, just like here. We had an elementary and a, a nine twelve. So it wasn't a seven twelve, it was a nine twelve. So we had a K eight and a nine twelve. So the K eight was actually larger by enrollment than the nine twelve. We have the opposite issue here. We have a K six and a seven twelve, just to kind of put a fine point on. Because we had a nine twelve district, our enrollment was lower, therefore our ADA was lower. But it encompassed a much broader, just like our secondary, right, all of San Rafael. So it had a broad property tax base, but lower enrollment. So that's what happens. The elementary district has a smaller ADA, like fifteen hundred ADA, but it's a much smaller portion of Petaluma. Where the high school district encompasses all.
Oh, and so they're, they're calculated differently?
Yes, we do two different calculations. We do two separate calcula- In San Rafael, they did two separate calculations and then two separate budgets. And they kept them separate because the high school district was a basic aid, and the elementary district was not. Because they had sixty-seven percent in the elementary and thirty-three percent in the secondary, where we have thirty-three percent in elementary and sixty-seven percent in the secondary. And that's important because the secondary is what has that broad tax base. And then we have charters on top of it, which complicates it even more. But a lot of people say, how do we sign up for basic aid? Well, it's, it, there is no-
You don't sign it. It is bestowed upon you.
Exactly. So everything you ever wanted to know. But, you know, just to put a perspective on it, we, we literally are roughly over thirty million dollars away from basic aid. So, so as much as we'd like to hope, even if we declined enrollment, we're not going to get there, not for some time.
So Chris, thanks for this analysis. I guess one of my takeaways from your data are, you know, kind of two possibilities. You know, one, you know, what I'm hearing from you is prepare, brace yourself for fiscal, you know, demise in a couple of years. But the other, you know, the, the flip side is boost enrollments. And, you know, and when I look at the historic comparison, you know, we have several years of just kind of variance, you know, natural variance, and then the last two years of like, you know, big, big drops. And so I'm trying to, I, I know, you know, in the state and in the country, you know, in, we're seeing lower birth rates anyway. You know, there are declining enrollments across the state, across the country. But I want to separate that, you know, which you can't avoid, and we have to prepare for that no matter what. I want to separate that from people who would be here, but, you know, voted with their feet to go out, which I presume, you know, because it started in the pandemic year, and, and also because anecdotally, I heard a lot of this, that parents saying, hey, I want in-person instruction last year. I'm voting with my feet. I'm leaving the district. Of those, we can get back, or we can try to get back. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, you know, force, we're not gonna have people have more babies, except for Matthew. But we can get, we can do things to, to attract, to keep our families here.
No, and I would tell you that there is declining enrollment going on across the country, California in particular. However, our trends do not show that we have been impacted seriously by that, except for the pandemic years. So clearly, this is pandemic related. I truly believe that. I would also say, you know, there's a lot of data. I have a lot of more detailed data that, you know, I use to create these trends. And when I was showing Matthew earlier, we were looking at it by grade level. You could clearly see, like, kinder was three hundred and thirty-six students or something. And then first and second grade were like, I don't know, three hundred and ten or two hundred and ninety-seven. I forget what the numbers were. But first grade and second grade were the anomaly. And then third was back up into the mid-threes and fourth and fifth and sixth. Well, first and second grade was kinder in first grade, right, during the pandemic. So, I mean, when you look at the data, and that's why, you know, I, I do, I've done a lot of trend analysis for enrollment over the years in my past lives, where we were a big growing district. And that's important because if you see, a lot of times you'll look at trends with districts and you see kind of these by grade level. I see that with our feeder districts, for example. But ours are pretty stable by grade. You know what I mean? They'll fluctuate by twenty or thirty, but they don't go from two fifty to three seventy-five. Generally speaking, they're in the threes, or for the secondary, they're in the seven fifties or eight hundreds. That senior class at eight ninety-something, that was the anomaly. And when we lose that, we don't gain that. And that's why I'm saying, that's almost like a permanent loss. That's non-pandemic related. That's a loss related to a large class matriculating out. That was probably a bubble all the way through the system. And I can look back at some other stuff and, and verify that, but that's what it looks like to me. But that's first and second grade class? That's where I think we got hit in the pandemic. And then I think alternatively, seventh through twelfth, we also got hit, you know, because of the pandemic. And, and, and students, I don't know where they went. I don't know whether they went to virtual learning. I, I don't know. But, but that's kind of what the data was showing me, just on the, just looking at it at that ten thousand foot level, not really drilling into individual student by individual student. I know a question was raised, well, where did they go? Well, that's the million dollar question, or in this case, maybe the three million dollar question. You know, and, you know, we could spend some time trying to analyze that a little bit further. But I think your question of how do we get those students back, I think it's going to be about providing good programs. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Comments from the public on non-agendized items? So we are going to open the chat. If you have a comment about something that was not on the agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat, and you will have four minutes, depending on what the topic is.
Does it look like we're getting any? Is that none, Ashley?
All right. All right, moving on, reports on activities and correspondence of school board members. So since the last meeting, circle up, teacher of the year ceremony, celebrating Danielle Kennedy, Truckapalooza, CASA parent meeting, SCO legislative roundtable with North Coast State Legislatures, Bureau of Labor Statistics webinar on employment and wages during COVID, Casa Grande Parent Education Night, and Budget Advisory Committee meeting. Does anyone have anything to share, Markson?
Truckapalooza was great. I got, I saw, first of all, that school, it may be tiny, but boy, oh, boy, it is well-supported by the people there, and their PTA is strong. And I got to see the electric bus, and it's beautiful, and it's-
Did you see the robot?
No. I didn't see the, I saw the bus, and, because I didn't want to see that, so now I don't have to go to the bus garage, because I saw it there. And buses have seatbelts now. I was really excited to see that. So I just want to give a shout out to their good stuff. And their IB program.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, comments from the public on consent items. So if you have a comment on anything in the consent agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
All right. I moved to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Is second.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question. I was, I, I love Ten Thousand Degrees. I entered two kids to Ten Thousand Degrees. So when I was reading the MOU, the price tag just seemed really high to me. And it's a fabulous program, but I'm wondering if, if, is it working? By, as in getting a lot of first-generation kids into college, or just staying in college, which is their, what they do. So I just saw that price tag and I went, what?
Sixteen, it's full-time, two full-time, but they do three to four hours a day.
Yeah, I was also wondering how effective it is, because it cites like a lot of measurements, you know, like, we're going to measure these things, but I didn't really see any data that was included, like how effective it's been in our district.
Tony, do you want to share the difference between last year, the last couple of years, and this year?
I don't have a lot of background since I wasn't here last year regards to Ten Thousand Degrees. I know that they worked with Kennelworth and Casa Grande. In this case, they'll be working with Casa Grande and Petaluma High School. Casa Grande being probably the greater of the need. We're looking at Casa Grande, forty percent of them are low-income students. You have twenty-seven percent of those, compared to the forty-two percent of all students, are college-ready. So there's a, a greater need for this type of service, based on what they're, what they are describing that they'll do. During this pandemic times, and, you know, I would recommend that it's something that we should keep because of what we're facing during the pandemic. But moving forward, we can then determine whether or not they would be appropriate for the following years. You have some one-time funding that could help support this with that cost.
I, I know, it's a fabulous program. I mean, I, I was involved with it in Tamaulipas, and I really saw what it did for a lot of kids out there. I just, I didn't know how expensive it was, and so when I saw that, I went, whoa. So that was just, I was just questioning.
Well, and the price is much higher this year because they are doing much more extensive work at the two high schools versus, last year was like sixty-five thousand. So as we, we are using some of the in-person instruction money to fund this. Moving forward, though, it's not sustainable without that, so-
Do they ever go to San Antonio?
I think if we do show them how well effective they are, it's something that we can then consider if San Antonio would be a good place for them as well.
I'm a part of DM, it's becoming a smaller.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you were saying that there's a greater need this year at CASA in Petaluma High? Can you talk about why?
Yeah, especially when we're looking at number of students who need credit recovery, for example. They have a lot of kids who are not on track to graduate, hence needing more credit recovery options. So it seems that the support might, might benefit them for this year.
And they're working directly, like, with them to get credit recovery? There's a credit recovery teacher as well, though, right?
Correct, yes. We have a credit recovery teacher as well as utilizing our online platforms that can help them get those credits faster as well, rather than having them, because there's not a lot of room that there are, it's to help them do their credit recoveries at this time.
But 10,000 Degrees was there last year, too. But you're saying that we're, do we see like a decline in graduation even with them there?
I don't believe there was a decline in graduation. I think the pandemic, for the last year's seniors, there wasn't a decline. But for like the current 10th graders, 11th graders who were impacted by the pandemic this last year, I think that we're seeing a greater need for them this current year than they were last year's seniors and juniors.
Are there more kids enrolled in credit recovery right now?
Last year, that, I don't believe there was as many kids in credit recovery from last year. Though I think a lot of them had moved to, there was more space at the old ed schools that where a few of them went. But I can probably gather some more numbers and get some more data if that's something that you're interested in having.
I'm just curious. I saw the price tag. I know they're-
Yeah, they are.
They're really helpful. And they get kids into college. And they get them money. So.
It'd be really important for us to really monitor them this year and really to see how impactful it will be. Yeah.
Thanks.
On item 12.3.1, the student board members' policy, I think there is an edit we need to address. Is that right, Tony?
Yes. So as I was reviewing it, the, the other day, I noticed that in the filing process and voting section, it says, once the filing application filing deadline will be null later than 4:00 PM on November 1st. And then it goes on to say, once the filing application has been, has been received and certified, the student board candidate can campaign until 5:00 PM December 2nd. However, it should reflect until 4:00 PM December 1st. So I would recommend making that change.
Right. So I move to edit item 12.3.1, student board, student board member policy, under the filing process and voting paragraph, changing 5:00 PM December 2 to 4:00 PM December 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks.
I have more of a comment than a question about 12.2.1. I just want to make sure we're recycling all of that electronic waste, not just throwing it in the, I don't think the dump would let us throw it in the dump anymore. But if we need someone to recycle it for free, that's what my work does. So.
Yeah, we do. We actually keep a whole pile of it until we recycle. So it definitely does not go in dumpster.
Well, I figured. I just thought I would ask.
That and fluorescent light bulbs.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, my God.
All right.
So on the cameras, they used to be funded by the tobacco grant, right?
So these cameras are going to be funded by the safety block grant. So we do get a small safety block grant from RUSIG if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So we're using that to fund cameras at both the district office and at San Antonio. And it really is safety-related. The activity around the district office, we are getting numerous complaints from our neighbors. I can tell you, as someone who is one of typically the last people to leave, now it's getting dark at night, we see a lot of activity. The good news is we've added a couple picnic tables out back. The bad news is we have added picnic tables out back. And I know even the police department has done more monitoring of this area. We found a lot of debris of people doing things they shouldn't be doing. Luckily, not really vandalism or anything, just they found a place where they are less visible. So, and then San Antonio, we did have some vandalism. And I know we've been working with that school set for a while.
Thank you.
And it's minimal. We're talking five or six cameras.
Just wonder.
Any other questions?
I moved, I'm not, but I need, we need to move to approve it as amended, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All in favor? Aye. Do we still have to vote on it? Do we vote?
No, we just approve.
Can we move on?
Yeah, we just approve the consent agenda.
Y'all gotta help me. Okay. Usually in bed by now. Yeah, now we can smell Kenny's over there.
The doughnuts. This is gonna make me crazy.
They're already starting for tomorrow.
Comments from the public on action items? We will open the chat for one minute. If you have a comment on any of our action items, please put your first and last name in the chat.
Okay, I think we can close the chat.
All right. Item 14.1, approval of resolution 21, 22-07, transition to a bi-trusty area election system commencing with the 2022 governing board election.
I need to approve resolution 21, 22-07.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Next item. We've got to vote on this, too. This is the AB 361, which we talked about previously.
Yep, every 30 days.
Do you want to talk about this, Matthew?
Every 30 days, and we need to bring it back. So most likely bring it back either every other meeting, just that we're, we're going to continue to keep the meetings in hybrid fashion, board and staff here, and limited space for, for the public presentations versus the public will be on Zoom.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
I moved to approve board meeting planning for AB 361.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, goodness, okay. This is Jason.
All right. So this is for the approval of assignments outside credential area. And ed code allows for teachers to teach outside their credential area, provided their consent and board approval. So the list that's included, if you, you look and see, the majority of these are renewals that we've done in the past. A big chunk is from Mary Collins because of their hybrid-type program between, between junior high and elementary, self-contained program. And then the rest are all secondary, many of them being electives. So we'd recommend that the board approve these.
All right, thank you.
I move to approve 4.1.3.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public on discussion slash information items?
Let's open the chat. Think we can close the chat?
All right. Board committee assignments and office hours. All right, who else wants to be on K-12?
I want to be on the first one.
Me, too.
Me, too.
Oh, uh-oh. Rose Shampoo.
Rose Shampoo.
Been on it before. I haven't been on it before.
Me neither.
I've never been on it, but that's okay.
Who's on it right now, then?
Me and, who else? Maddie?
No, I wasn't on curriculum.
Who was on curriculum? Was it Ellen? Thank you guys for, oh, it's just me?
Nope.
Okay.
It's just me.
Okay, I don't need to be on it. I work till 5:00. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, it is usually after school, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Right after school.
I can't take that much-
She can, girl.
Especially this year.
Yes.
It'll be after school.
So me and Maddie?
Okay, Ellen and Maddie.
Oh, so we won't be later? Yeah, not happening. But you can soon then.
Look, you have the assignment, and it's almost 10 o'clock. So we're gonna move on to the next one. Okay, so next is budget advisory.
And I'm on that right now. And I-
I will go on it.
Perfect.
Who else? Just me and Sheldon? Okay.
You and I are swapping.
Okay.
Moneybags, the two of us.
So wait, so Joanna and Sheldon are?
Yeah.
And then LCAP? It is the most exciting. I mean, I cannot wait to see all your spreadsheets.
I'll go on LCAP.
LCAP? Okay, LCAP is, I like LCAP.
I've stayed on it, but I've been on it for a while.
What are the times for LCAP typically?
It's good for you.
I think we have four, four, 4 o'clock to 5:30.
Oh, I thought it used to do it at 6:00.
It used to be, uh-
We were saying it's earlier now?
It would be a little earlier.
Four or 5 o'clock, you said?
It's 4:00 to 5:30.
Yeah, 4:00 to 5:30.
You can do that?
I can make it work.
Okay. So Caitlin, and is there anyone else who wants to be on LCAP?
I have a zero.
But, but, but I've been on it. So.
I mean, I have two. That's okay.
I'm going on budget. Go for it.
Yeah, yes.
I've been on LCAP for two years. I'd love to see that.
Go for it. Yeah.
How the sausage gets me.
Yes.
And I have you.
There you go.
Okay, Caitlin and Maddie, are there any other committees that we're not thinking of?
I'm with you on the K-12.
That's it? Those are the committees? Okay.
Traditionally.
Yep.
What about Chippa? We've always had board representation.
I was not in this.
Just someone over there.
It's not a district committee. So it doesn't really matter, right?
But I found that I'm usually working, their meetings are smack dab in the middle of the day.
Lunchtime.
Really bad timing.
Sounds like Maddie's going to continue with that. Yeah, I can't either.
I'll walk in when I can. But anybody's welcome. It's free.
Yeah, Matt is going to be there regardless.
Right, let her stay on. Okay, so moving on to office hours.
So I'd like to propose that, you know, last time we tried this pre-pandemic, we were committing to two of us at a time on a, on campus. And it was a little bit cumbersome to figure, find times for two of us to show up. I would propose that, you know, just one of us needs to show up and maybe set a goal for, you know, one of us showing up at all the schools every semester, for every half-year, I should say, something like that.
So you're saying one board member for just office hours?
Yeah. First site for time, that's what I'm suggesting.
Wait, you said one board member for how long? Like-
For an office hour. No, for, 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 you know, so at Valley Vista, if we're having an office hour at Valley Vista one day, just one of us.
Oh, okay.
So you're saying-
But scheduling, you know, every school, I would say, at least twice a year, something.
Okay.
A little more manageable than finding time where two of us can get together and squeeze up jobs and all that.
But if someone else wants to tag along with me, I will not be opposed.
And I'd also like to ask Ashley if, and what do you guys think? I would, I would love to see something on our website where a group can request a board member to show up, like at a PTA meeting or a booster club. So we just say, invite a board member, and they just say, hey, can somebody show up at this meeting? And then we get the message, and then you figure out among us who can show up for that.
Some kind of form on a website.
I'm still confused about-
Is that too much?
No, I think it's a great idea.
You're giving me, you're giving me like, no more meetings.
I'm thinking about how many kids I have.
You don't have to go.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. I actually don't mind that. Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's good because I think we want to be more accessible anyway. So.
But I want to talk about the office hours. I understand only having one board member. But I'm confused. You're saying it would be one board member would be in charge of all the schools for-
No, 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 no. I'm saying a board member should show up at each school for, I mean, not at each school. Every school should have a board member show up twice a year.
So we just make sure between the five of us, we hit every school within us.
Okay, yeah, I was really confused.
Yeah, I said, I said it wrong. That's, that's what, that's just a suggestion.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's doable.
We could just try the open invitation thing, too, if we wanted to. But that would be, that would be pretty limited to, you know, parents and groups who are already organized. What the office hours could pick up are just parents who are just individuals who are concerned.
Yeah.
And you know, it's, I think it's really important to have them after school so that teachers can come. But then I'm concerned that maybe parents can't because there was a kid, you know what I mean?
Caitlin and I did one at night. So we could always do that.
I'm not doing one at night by myself.
Well, I know, together. It says Caitlin and I. Caitlin and I.
Caitlin, I'll come with you at night.
Yeah, you'll protect me.
I might fall asleep. That's fine.
It won't be this late. So, okay, so that sounds good. So.
So we can do some mornings and some after-school, whichever seems to work best for the school.
Sounds like after-school or evening?
I think so, yeah.
You know, we did that one at Valley Vista at 8:00 in the morning because that's what they asked for.
Yeah, I can do an occasional morning.
We had a lot of people.
Yeah, we had more people, actually. Because it lasts the movement, you know, taking your kids to different places.
How about, Matthew, would it be possible for you to just ask all the principals to give us like, two dates in the year, dates and times? And then, once we get all the dates, we can sign up for them. That work? Dates and times that work for the school side?
Sure. Yeah. So we can get, we can get two dates and times from the principals. But you, do you want the principals there?
No.
Because then, if you don't want, if you don't want, need the principals there, you can really decide when you want to, I mean.
Well, I mean, I think I would, I think the principals would know what would be a time slot that would be-
That would work for, for staff, for parents, various kinds of things.
Exactly.
Like, would they prefer it first thing in the morning at the drop-off?
Or, or after-school? Or after-school or evening?
Or evening.
And, you know, what day their staff meetings are, so we don't conflict with that.
Okay.
In the form, too. You guys okay with the form?
Yeah.
Request form?
And it's not, it's not a guarantee. It's not written right on there that it's not a guarantee. Because if none of us can go, none of us can go.
It's a request.
But yeah, I mean, if they want to invite us to a PTA meeting or school-type council meeting, that would be great.
So from the principals, you want two dates and times? You want one in the fall, one in the spring?
Yeah.
Kind of thing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, once we have this, then we can.
Maybe I can just kind of create a list, and then you can all determine which ones you have.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Kind of like we did with the, like, the school, yeah, graduation.
Oh, the graduations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, item 16.1.2, Jason Williams Settlement Quarterly Report.
Good news, no complaints.
Hey. Wow, item 17, Future Business, Cool City Challenge Presentation.
Yeah.
And Professional Development Update. Anything else you guys want as future business?
So then the Cool City Challenge Presentation, you want to, you want to have someone?
Either November or December.
Okay.
Well, we have to start figuring out where we have our public ratings to, uh-
Oh, yeah. Well, that's going to be every meeting for the next five or six meetings, we'll be doing demographer. Yes. So the attorney, I'm, I'm working with them on getting a demographer.
Okay.
So the Cool City Challenge and Professional Development Update, I mean, we can just kind of, essentially what you're looking for, for the Professional Development Update is what professional developments are, have we been offering, or are we offering? And how is that going? Is that what the?
And I want to know if there's any PD for administrators as well.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure Tony had a little bit of guidance on what you're looking for.
Had professional development a couple of times.
Yeah.
You know, like, maybe even through the, I don't know whether Circle Up was considered, but-
Yeah, definitely.
You know, just to kind of get an idea from, from our staff about professional development.
I think it would be-
Maybe it could even be like a survey from the staff. Maybe it could even be like a survey from the staff.
Yeah, like what are they, what they
You know, like, how are they, you know, is it, do they see this meeting their needs?
Because we all know that top-level PD doesn't work.
Would you say, would you agree with that?
Not about that. I think that we should have at least one of them at public hearings, not during the board meeting. I think we should have at least one that's a little more accessible and intentional, maybe like at Luke K's or on Zoom at a different time.
Okay, so have a, have a special
I agree, that's a good idea.
Within the next three days, right?
Somewhere, at some different time.
Okay, so perhaps I should
All five of us would have to be there, I think, but
Yeah, you'd have to, we'd have to do a special
Like a, a discussion, what do we call that?
It would just be a hearing, we just listen.
We'd call a special, special RME. So have to have Michelle reach out and figure out what would be a good time. So you're thinking like during, during the day? Wouldn't you say more, more accessible during the school, during the day?
I'm just thinking of the forum, the community forum we had back in the before times on that Saturday. Like, it wouldn't be that involved, obviously, and it wouldn't take that long.
We could do one on Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, Saturday morning.
It was very successful.
Maybe one as a regular board meeting.
It's easier for community members and current board members.
But either one of any of the
As long as it's not October 30. My daughter's getting married on that day.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
I didn't realize she was actually at the wedding, I'll plan.
All right. Were we just doing future business? Yeah, okay. All right, meeting adjourned.